All right, I call this meeting to order at 5:30 PM. We will acknowledge our in-person meeting status. Members of the public may directly address the board by attending in-person meetings and submitting a public comment card. We do not take public comment through the online platform that we're streaming on, and we cannot guarantee online streaming if that platform malfunctions for any reason. Members of the public are always encouraged to share their thoughts and concerns with me, the Board President Caitlin Quinn, at cquinn@petk12.org. If you're not able to attend in person, if you do email me during the board meeting, I probably won't see it until after the board meeting, though. Now to hear from comments on the public, on closed session items. Anyone in the public want to comment on closed session? Yeah, I didn't think so, but you never know, you never know. All right, then I'm going to adjourn us to closed session, and we'll be back at 6:00. All right, I'm gonna reconvene this meeting at 6:02. Thank you all for waiting for us. Trustee Pawn, would you lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance? Oh, the Pledge of Allegiance to Maddie Cloud, yeah. And we're gonna kick off our first, well, I mean, it's the first meeting of the school year. It's not really our first meeting of the year, but it's the first meeting of the school year. I think we have a Welcome Back video and presentation.
Yes, so we have two topics for this Welcome Back PCS topic, which is the video and also introduction to our new principal at the adult school. Jason isn't here, so we're gonna start with the video presentation.
Had I the heavens embroidered cloths enwrought with gold and silver light, of blue and the dim and the dark cloths, of night and light and the half-light, I would spread the cloths under your feet. But I, being poor, have only my dreams. I have spread my dreams under your feet. Tread softly, because you tread on my dreams. And every day, everywhere, our children spread their dreams beneath our feet, and we should tread softly.
When I grow up, I want to be an actress.
When I grow up, I want to be a nurse, just like my parents.
When I grow up, I want to be an artist.
When I grow up, I want to be a tradesman, plumbing or electrical.
When I grow up, I want to be a vet, vet to take care of animals.
My dream is to be an NFL football player, but first I gotta go to high school and play football to practice.
When I grow up, I want to be a babysitter.
When I grow up, I want to be an astronaut.
When I grow up, I want to be a police officer.
When I grow up, I want to be a therapist, so I can help people with their mental health.
I dream of a world that would be no rude people.
I dream for world peace.
I dream of a world that everyone has a home.
I dream of a world with no racist people.
I dream that all the people have friends to play with.
I dream of a world where there's more peace in the government.
I dream of a world of kindness.
Hi, I graduated from Casa Grande in 2020. I then moved on to Chico State and got my bachelor's, and I'm now back at Pengrove doing my student teaching with Sonoma State, and I'm back at the elementary school that I came to. When I was in junior high, I had a teacher who really made my education all that it could be. She let me come into her classroom in the morning and work on my woodshop projects. Her name's Miss Hill. She would let me do the things I needed to do. And during lunch, we started a program called Blessings in a Backpack, where we packed lunches for students who maybe didn't have meals over the weekend, and we could send it to the elementary schools in the district, so every student had what they needed. She really made a big impact on my education and got me to where I am today.
I graduated Petaluma High School in 2010. After graduating, I attended Modesto Junior College, and then transferred two years later to Cornell University, where I majored in animal science and ag business. After graduating college, I started a career in animal nutrition and merchandising logistics, spent six to eight years there before moving back to Sonoma County. In 2022, I started my own company called Integrity Trading, where I moved commodities all over California, Oregon, and Nevada. I've always been very deep-rooted in agriculture, growing up, going through Petaluma High School through the FFA program. And one teacher that really made an impact on me through that timeframe was Mrs. Arns. She allowed me to do my own thing. She empowered me to reach for my goals, set new goals, and continue to strive towards excellence in the FFA program. And I just want to say thank you.
I'm a recent graduate in the class of 2024, and later on this month, I will be moving to Portland, attending University of Portland as a nursing major, and possibly getting a minor in public health and wellness. In my time in high school, I had a very influential teacher, Ms. Holly, who taught me so many things that I'll be learning in my career, and she made me realize that nursing is my biggest passion.
I'm a graduate from the class of 2024 this June, and in a few weeks, I'll be heading off to Columbia University to study climate system science and economics. As I think back to my time in elementary school, I remember my librarian, Ms. Moy, who was one of the strongest influences for me to just go out there and see the world. Through her effort in pushing me to pursue whatever I wanted and just explore things through literature and find who I really wanted to be in those books, she helped stimulate who I wanted to be by exploring the world. And this is my thank you to her and all the PCS teachers for their hard work in shaping students for the future.
All students have value, infinite potential, and a right to an excellent education.
All students learn in a safe and caring environment, where they are motivated to do their best work.
All students reach high levels of achievement through rigorous and culturally relevant curriculum.
Diversity is an asset that strengthens and enriches our learning community.
Parents and caregivers are recognized and engaged as partners.
The community supports the educational program and is engaged as a partner in resource and student learning.
Shared decision-making is valued, and active participation from all educational partners is critical to students' success.
So I know that as an organization, we have a lot of work to do to continue to improve us and ensure that we, you know, provide the best for our students. But at the same time, we also are doing great things, and it's great to celebrate all the wonderful teachers and staff that support our students and the community that we serve. So, thank you for doing what you guys do. With that, I'll hand it off to Jason to help us introduce our new principal at the adult school.
All right, I wanted to invite Michelle Deveraux up to the front. Hey, Michelle. So we are pleased to announce Michelle Deveraux's assignment as the new principal of Petaluma Adult School. Michelle assumed her duties on August 12th of 2024, and she comes to PCS with over 20 years of experience in education, having been a high school principal, a high school teacher, an assistant principal, a principal, a director of teaching and learning, and a founding CEO of schools for a two-generation educational charter school. Her adult education experience includes training parents how to be classroom assistants, six years as national faculty with the Buck Institute for Education and PBL Works, designing targeted curriculum and technology professional learning for educators across the United States with EdSurge, and being a guest lecturer for San Jose State's Teaching Credential Program and Turo University's Master's in Administration Program. Michelle was also founding director of a 501(c)(3) nonprofit that created the Center for Excellence Training Center at New Technology High School in Napa. Michelle has a Bachelor's of Arts from Santa Clara University, a Master's of Educational Management and an administrative credential from the University of Laverne. Michelle is thrilled to be part of Petaluma Adult School and looks forward to supporting teachers and staff to continue offering first-class adult education throughout Sonoma County. Michelle believes that adult education opens doors and can equip every learner with the tools they need to achieve career and personal success. Please join us in welcoming Michelle Deveraux as the new principal at Petaluma Adult School.
Thank you so much. Thanks for that beautiful introduction, and thank you, Board of Trustees. This is seriously one of the greatest honors. And in the first two weeks in this position, I have seen what this program is doing for our community and the staff that does everything imaginable to meet the needs of the people they serve. It is inspirational, and I am here to support them and continue growing and maintaining and advancing this amazing program. So I'll give it everything I have with all of my heart and soul. So, thank you. Thank you.
Well, that was a good way to start the year. Amy out here making me cry with that video. And now I'm probably gonna cry a little more. We're gonna swear in our student board members.
Okay, yes, we are ready for our new student board members this year. I would like to call up Olivia Leonard. Just a little bit of background on Olivia. Olivia Leonard is currently a senior at Petaluma High School. Olivia is very involved with her school through her ASB Leadership Class, currently serving as the ASB president and enjoying the experience representing Petaluma High School. In fact, you can almost always find Olivia in the student section wearing all-out purple, supporting her school's sports teams, and cheering very loudly for all of her athletes. This year, Olivia is exploring a variety of new activities, such as tennis and participating in new clubs. During her senior year, Olivia will be spending time learning about colleges and starting the application process for a college with the hopes to get into the university in California. Currently, she is thinking about majoring in political science or psychology. Outside of school, Olivia has a big family with four younger siblings. She also works at an art gallery downtown. One of the things Olivia is most looking forward to this year is having the opportunity to serve as a student board member and the Petaluma High School ASB president. These roles will give her an incredible position to implement the ideas and opinions of the students at Petaluma High and better their school experience. So, welcome, Olivia. So, to make it official, we're gonna swear you in. So if you could hold up your right hand. So congratulations on being elected to serve as a student board member to represent Petaluma High School under Government Section 1360 and Article 20 of the state constitution by the power vested in me for the state of California and the full PCS Board of Education. Please repeat after me. I, Olivia Leonard, do solemnly swear that I will support and defend the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the state of California against all enemies, foreign and domestic, that I will bear true faith and allegiance to the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the state of California, that I take this obligation freely without any mental reservation or purpose of evasion, and I will well and faithfully discharge the duties upon which I am about to enter. Congratulations, student board member Olivia. Okay, at this time, I would like to call up Ava Hagigi. A little bit about Ava. Ava Hagigi is a senior at Casa Grande High School who exemplifies the school's graduate learner outcome, broad literacy, civic engagement, employability, and personal vision. Ava is particularly passionate about civic engagement, which she is actively contributing, contributes to this as a student board member. Her leadership is evident in her role as president of the Interact Club, the Positivity Project, and her school's HOSA Chapter. For those of you who don't know, HOSA is the Future Health Professionals Organization. Ava's dedication extends beyond the school, where she participates in school musicals and plays, including Legally Blonde, and looks forward to upcoming productions like Little Women and Mean Girls. Ava also volunteers with Miracle League, organizes hygiene and gift drives with UNAVIDA, and celebrates and collaborates with NAMI, the National Alliance of Mental Illness, to advocate for adolescents' mental health in Sonoma County. Her commitment to community service and leadership demonstrates her profound dedication to making a positive impact in her community, and we look forward to her work making an equal impact as a student board member for PCS. All right, so with that, congratulations on being elected to serve as a student board member to represent Casa Grande High School under Government Section 1360 and Article 20 of the state of constitution by the power vested in me from the state of California and the full PCS Board of Education. Please repeat after me. I, Ava Hagigi, do solemnly swear that I will support and defend the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the state of California against all enemies, foreign and domestic, that I will bear true faith and allegiance to the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the state of California, that I take this obligation freely without any mental reservation or purpose of evasion, and that I will well and faithfully discharge the duties upon which I am about to enter. Congratulations. All right, and lastly, I'd like to invite Daniel Viera. Daniel Viera is currently a senior at San Antonio High School. Daniel was born and raised in San Bruno, California, until he moved to Petaluma in 2021. Throughout the past three years, Daniel has grown significantly, making substantial progress at achieving his goals and improving his academic performance, as he joins us here today. He has earned the highest grades of his academic career. At an early age, Daniel's parents encouraged him to play soccer. However, he preferred bouncing a ball instead, and chose basketball, where he played for his school and on several AAU teams. Daniel also enjoys making cars go faster and fixing up cars and motorcycles. This passion for cars and mechanics led him to enroll in auto shop as an elective in the high school, where he advanced to more specialized auto program by his sophomore year. Interestingly, he and a classmate began a project to restore a 1953 wheelie wagon installing a mid-1980s Chevy 350 cubic inch small-block V8 engine with custom-made motor and transmission mounts. Although the project is still ongoing, Daniel hopes to see the complete project in the future. After graduation, Daniel plans to attend a trade school, preferably a YO Tech, to study automotive mechanics and pursue his passion for owning his own shop one day. One of his life goals is to combine his business with his father's business to achieve financial freedom and avoid working past the age of 60. He appreciates the opportunity to share his story and looks forward to serving as the PCS community as a student board member. All right. Congratulations on being elected to serve as a student board member to represent alternative education high schools under Government Section 1360 and Article 20 of the state constitution by the powers vested in me from the state of California and the full PCS Board of Education. Please repeat after me. I, Daniel Viera, do solemnly swear that I will support and defend the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the state of California against all enemies, foreign and domestic, that I will bear true faith and allegiance to the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the state of California, that I take this obligation freely without any mental reservation or purpose of evasion, and that I will well and faithfully discharge the duties upon which I am about to enter. Congratulations.
Thank you, Tony. Welcome, Ava, Daniel, and Olivia. We are so excited to have you all on board. This is our fourth class of student board members, and we're just so excited to do this with all of you. And so, thank you to the friends and family that came out to support your student board members. Sorry, I cry all the time. It's a thing. It's a thing. But we know that they wouldn't be here without all of you. So, thank you. And then if I can stop crying, and we will, well, I might cry again. Special education study presentation. Sarah, what are you, are you gonna make me cry?
Hello. So, I just want to start out by, I was crying in the background as well, as I wipe my nose. The opportunity that we've had to do this special education study with School Services of California has been really invaluable. We've learned a lot of information that we're here to give you an overview and to share about tonight. So I'll hand it off to Angelique.
Great. Hi, my name's Angelique Pelletier, and I am here representing School Services of California. We were invited to do a special education study with your staff. I came to School Services after 25 years of public service. I've been with them for a little under three years, and I have really been enjoying being out in the field. I've spent more time in classrooms in the last two and a half years than I did in the last 10 years of my career. So, it's really nice to see kids and see instruction. So Sarah and I are gonna do a little bit of tag teaming. There is a lot of text on many of our slides for reference. I'm not gonna read them. I'm assuming that you have read most of them, but we wanted you to have this information or that someone who wasn't here to have the information that they could reference. So this slide says that we were invited to be here and that we focused on your special education programs. These are the areas of the study that we focused on, looking at different data sources and connecting with the people who provide the services that you provide to your students. We organize a report under really these five headings, where we look first at organization effectiveness, communication, and then we look at different aspects that can influence your program and the outcomes you're obtaining in your district for the choices that you made. And today, Sarah and I are gonna actually spend a little bit of time focusing on the special education cost drivers, but we will hit each one of these areas in our presentation. You have some focus goals for students with disabilities within your documents, your strategic plan, your LCAP, and there were some specific goals for doing this study. And when we see core values, such as the ones that we have here, we really know that you have a commitment to meeting the needs of students with disabilities, and so that really energizes us when we come and meet with your staff. Like any good special education meeting, I like to start with strengths, because it really honors and values the work commitment and time that your staff spend on behalf of the students that they serve. We met many amazing people. We saw fantastic instruction in motion in many of the classrooms we went to. We saw great compliant IEP documents. And some of the words in that star are the words that your own people said about their colleagues and about the program itself. So those are words that we pull from interviews that we have completed. Your district has had changing demographics, like every other district in the state of California, but in some areas, you haven't had such large swings that other places have. So this is your district enrollment overall for the last decade or more, and we see some slight fluctuations and also fluctuations in the number of students that you're serving. This is important, because the number of students you serve in special education largely drives the people you need, the kinds of programs you will have, and the cost it will mean for your district. This is a slide showing the percentage of your enrollment, that is students who have been identified as a student with a need or a disability. And the orange line is the statewide average for special education student incidents, incidents of special education eligibility. And so you can see that for many years, you have outpaced the statewide average and that you were on an increasing trend through '21 and '22. But in '22, '23, you actually had a slight downward trend, which your special education department attributes to some increases in enrollment without adding additional students with disabilities and students departing from the program. But we also think that there is probably some impact from some of the activities that you're invested in out in the field. Good teaching means that students get their needs met and don't necessarily need to be identified for special education. So for every section, you'll notice that we have a standard and areas of investigation. This is, again, for your reference. It shows you what we were looking for when we were in that area of our data analysis or asking questions or doing observations. And so what we saw when we were out in the field interviewing people and looking at data is that you've got a lot of really great equity and student-focused people who are part of your team, which is a great place to start. We also know that you have a lot of people who support your sites and support your students, and even with some of those additional investments, your programs and your school sites still believe that they have some needs that are being unmet. And so there were some specific job types that were noted over and over again. People love the support they're receiving from school psychologists and from some related service providers, such as speech specialists. And at the time we were here, you had some vacancies in your management team, which were really being felt. I know that Sarah will tell you about some outcomes that are current into your program, but we really noted that if you want to meet all the things that you want your programs to do, that are in your LCAP, that are in your site plan goals, that you really need to have the appropriate kind of support available for your staff and for your team. And that goes beyond just special education. One of the themes of this report was that there is so much opportunity to achieve alignment and preventative action by investing in the skills and capacity of the staff who are not special education teachers, who are not only in special education programs. So I'm gonna let Sarah highlight some of those last two about some PD and training that she has been able to provide.
Yeah, so, whoops, I went the wrong way. So, as you know, my department is not only responsible for the special education needs of students, but also under the home hospital instruction. So for the '23-'24 school year, we were fully staffed, we became fully staffed at those rates. So as we come into this coming school year, my department is fully staffed with management. So that is really good for us within the department. And then the professional development that we've done to build the capacity for administrators, looking at universal design for learning at our retreat, really getting a foundation and understanding of what universal design for learning is and how do we support. And that was something that I highlighted at our admin retreat this coming, this school year. I also have a focus of really looking at the curriculum that are in our special day classes and wanting to make sure that we are also in alignment for students receiving a diploma. So that is something that is also a highlight for us, as well as developing some clear processes and protocols. So not only the staff have an understanding of what their processes are, but then when we talk with the administration staff, that they have an understanding of what policies and procedures are.
It's always nice for us when we come and do a study, and then the director's already like, "We're already in progress. We have that lined up. That's already on our list of things to do." And that is, we really came at a time when there was already some forward thinking done, and that was really nice to see. We also looked at your staffing. And I wanted to mention, as we get into staffing and students-level information, is that this study focused on your high school programs and your Petaluma City Schools, elementary programs. We did not include the South County Consortium in this study at this time. It's not that that data analysis maybe won't be done by the department, but it wasn't within the parameters of what we looked at. And so when we looked at special education staffing, as already noted, we're glad she's fully staffed, because even at fully staffed, it might still be tight. it might still be tight. You have a lot going on with two separate districts acting as one that still have to do completely separate reporting in every aspect of their special education programming. There were some additional supports, services added to the programs which sites noted where it was excellent. But one of the themes was is that in every single school, a desire for additional support, support for behavioral and mental health needs, so behavioral health challenges. And so really building the capacity of some of the investments you've already made and expanding those to meet the needs of more pupils at every one of your sites is an area where we think you really could continue to receive the outcomes that you want for the choices that you're making. And then finally, there is a need, your staff, your line staff, your educators really believe that they need more time to plan and to follow up and to build the capacity of the instructional support staff who are in their classroom settings. Those teams are doing the, the majority of the work and sometimes they don't have enough time to come well-trained or to train during the day or to debrief at the end of a, of a tough day when something has occurred. So again, we've heard that the leadership team is, is fully staffed at last year's staffing levels and that there were some more psychologists and speech specialists hired within your district. And but what we note is that you only have one behaviorist for the whole district. And so for a district of this size and scope, that may be putting some strain on your systems. And we believe that you may find by the end of this year that your fully staffed management team might need another manager to support the, the scope and breadth of, of work that is going on out there in your classrooms. In terms of IEP compliance, we found great things when we looked at IEPs. And we know that Sarah has implemented some trainings and there are great tools, templates available, note-taking workshops available for your administrator, administrators, excuse me. You are participating in a process called compliance and improvement monitoring because you have some data related to your students with disabilities outcomes that is not meeting the targets for statewide targets. And so we are really pleased to see that some of your SIM work is aligned with your LCAP goals. But we do believe that there might be a need to share that information with a broader range of people. So it's not just those small teams that are working on that, but that it becomes part of the systematic messaging that the work we do is the work on behalf of all students, not students with disabilities over here and the rest of our population over here. So I'm gonna move into revenue and expenditure, which I know everyone is always really, really interested in. And unfortunately, what we almost never do is find ways to save billions of dollars when we do these studies. Because for the most part, what we're seeing in the state are trends that costs are rising. The number of students when it's high, as your percentage is high, costs more. And so what we really want to do is help you identify, are you getting what you want out of the choices you're making? So this is your comparative group. We compared all of these districts to you for all of the different data points. So in, you'll, you'll see in different places where we say the comparative group and statewide. And so what we see here is that you have some of the highest revenue for the comparative group, but you also have expenditures that are in alignment with your revenue. You are not spending way more than statistically would be expected for the amount of revenue you have, nor for the amount of pupils that you serve. You also have some of the higher end of contribution per ADA from your local general fund, but it's not the highest. So there are things here that are things where we know, we see rising costs, but this data does not make us concerned for you that you are anomalous in terms of outpaced spending that is unreasonable to the number of students you're serving or the kinds of programs that you're offering. We also break this down by your special education cost per category. And one of the things that we think was really interesting here was that you can see that your salaries and benefits for your certificated and classified staff members, that you have more spending in those areas. It doesn't necessarily mean that your salaries are the highest, but it does mean you have more spending in those areas. But part of that is because unified districts and your comparative group are spending money on people to provide services that are not their employees. So you are spending more money on employees and less money on services, which is non-public agencies and contractors, and way less money on other outgoing, which is revenue that you would send to a partner LEA. So you're still paying, they're paying people, they just don't, they're not their employees. And you are serving more students internally and serving them with your own personnel, which is actually something we usually recommend.
What are the, what's the time unit on the last two slides?
This data is all from 22, 23.
It's annual?
State certified annual data for 22, 23.
If I can just say that the, the last slide that Angelique talked about is that that's something I'm really proud of and really proud of the department for that we are able to provide services for, for students with our own employees rather than contracting out. That is really something that we've worked really hard at and something we're proud of.
So I spoke to many of these bullet points while we were looking at the pictures because it's way more interesting. But I do note that, that we do recommend that you continue to monitor budget decisions and budget making and that it's really critical to ensure that when you are making those choices, that it's in alignment with all of your district mission and vision goals, that special education not be operating in a silo. Did you want to speak to the program update?
Yeah. As part of this, Amanda and I are meeting very regularly to look at the budget and to kind of see where the program and dollars are being spent. Amanda is doing a phenomenal job and trying to educate me as quickly as I can in the budget side of the house. So that is something that we have scheduled and really looking at that data on how the dollars are being spent and being mindful of that.
And I invited them to help me, to participate with me on some actual specific agenda items for the course of the year. I'm working on trying to develop some supports for teams that are newer to districts or newer in their leadership or in just wanting to manage and learn more about budgets. And so they said that they would tell me, what are the things we're asking questions about so that we can, and then I can give them some, some guidance and information over the course of the year. So I look forward to that. So now I'm gonna shift to cost drivers because these are the reasons that your special education costs may be elevated in addition to the staff that you, you need to serve the students that you are serving. And so here again are the things that we're looking at. And one of the key critical things that we are looking at is what are you doing for your entire system? For every learner and the different learning needs that may come up in an educational system. The power of pre-referral intervention and early intervention and best quality first teaching cannot be overstated. So just some data for your district. This is 2020, 2022, 2023 state certified data. You are the outer ring and your comparative group is the inner ring as a, as an average. And what we see here is that you have actually fairly similar rates in many areas of incidence of disability than your comparative group. We also had a statewide average and you were very similar to the statewide average. You actually have fewer students identified as students with autism or with speech language impairment, which I think really reflects some targeted work that you did to make sure that your assessments were very high quality in those areas. Whereas you have slightly higher rates of specific learning disability, which may be correlated with some of the things we're gonna talk about in the next slides where we talk about the fact that your literacy program has not yet really shown all of the outcomes that you're interested in seeing. So what we know is that you have a high percentage of students with disabilities. When we see that, we then look at referral rates and what we see is that your referral rates are very high. You have lots of students being referred for special education and many of those referrals are bypassing your MTSS and your student study team process. So your parents are referring directly for assessment and they're not engaging with or being provided with an opportunity to benefit from your multi-tiered system of support, early intervention, literacy strategies, things that you have either developing or enforce at some of your classrooms. We saw site-by-site differences in those programs. Some sites are leaps and bounds ahead and some sites are still working on getting those components underneath them. So we did run some site-by-site analysis and we do see more referrals at sites where you have newer and emerging practices rather than at those sites where you have really well-established practices. What we know is that these cost drivers, the things that happened before special ed, the things that happen instead of special education referral and the partnership between the, the general education staff and the special education staff are the things that can lower your incidence of disability and do not mean that you're not serving kids. It means that you're serving them earlier in a system for all learners instead of only for special education. So we really encourage you to continue ensuring that you have site-by-site consistency in both your MTSS and your SST process, that you reinvigorate constantly your commitments to universal design for learning, literacy engagement, which is critical for both your goals and for your students with disabilities, the students with the learning disabilities, specific learning disabilities. Most of those are gonna be correlated to students with reading challenges. And then finally, there were a couple of areas where we looked around the edges of what opportunities do you have to spend less on special education? And one of the ones that did rise to the top is you do have some cohorts of students in some of your local non-public schools that with the right planning and transition support for those families and those students, that you may be able to bring them back and serve them better closer to home. You're already doing a great job in many places. And we think that there's nothing uniquely special about those schools that your staff could not replicate. And so here's an opportunity for Sarah to also say a couple of things about the areas where she's focusing this year.
Yeah, I think the main three areas, and I highlighted this in the slide, that for focus of this year is really looking at the service delivery models, especially in our secondaries. And also looking at the certificate of completion, students receiving a certificate of completion versus a diploma and what does that look like? And what curriculum is being provided to students and the support that we can provide our staff in that? And then also working side-by-side with the ed services team on the student study team process along with multi-tiered systems of support. And then clearly continue the work with site administrators on policies and procedures around special ed. We're constantly changing, laws are constantly moving. It's a, it's a target that I'm always learning about, but also to provide that information and support to our site administrators as well. So those are kind of the big areas that we'll be focusing, focusing on for the remainder of this school year and years to come.
And forever and forever. So this is really the summary of our study. Your, your department is not just special education, it's student services. So that management team is not just supporting special ed, they're supporting all of the things and that are beyond that, including home hospital and some other components. Your team has a lot of skills and expertise and they really can be valuable partners with your ed services department and in your journey towards having a strong, robust MTSS using those components of universal design for learning to meet the needs of all learners. Your cost drivers for the most part exist outside of special education, which is common. It's not just you. And that means that you really need to make sure that those investments that you're choosing to make in pre-referral, multi-tiered systems, social, emotional, learning, behavioral and mental health, that you really need to be consistently monitoring and measuring those outcomes and making sure that you're getting the outcomes that you want for the investments that you make because that will pay off. You will continue to decrease in your percentage of students with disabilities. You'll have services available to more students, not just students who have met a threshold for eligibility for special education. And really, I always like to sort of circle it all the way back to your own mission. You have a mission of providing an equitable and diverse inclusive education. I said in the wrong order, but that's your, those are your goals. And you really have lots of components available to you. And what we see as people who go to lots and lots of school districts is that if you could replicate what is happening at some of your most outstanding schools with veteran teams or really well-established policy, procedure and practice, that you would see those similar outcomes roll out to your other schools as well. So we really appreciate being invited here and I can answer more questions if you want, but we wanted to make sure we hit all of the highlights during the time that we had. Thank you.
Great. Thank you so much for that. Very thorough report and very thorough presentation, which is great. I actually was able to follow everything you were saying.
And also the recommendations from the report are at the very end, so.
Perfect. Does anyone have any question? Go for it.
Sarah, you know, you, you started out by saying, you know, great opportunity this was. What do you take from this study and what do you need to make these things happen?
Yeah, that's a great question. It has been a wonderful opportunity and I think when we look at some of the recommendations, there's 15 of them that, that School Services of California have given us. And really I've had the opportunity to meet with Cabinet to also talk about that it just doesn't land on special services shoulders, that it's really all of us. And continuing to celebrate the work that the staff get up in the morning and do. But some of those recommendations just around looking at the, the student outcomes and how our students with disabilities are experiencing our system and our school, I think is one of my biggest goals this year and looking at that service delivery model and what do I, you know, thinking about what I need. They really highlight those 15 recommendations and I think in order for my department to continue to run smoothly, it's really looking at what's happening prior to a referral to special education. And what does that look like for a student who may be at risk or a promise that's struggling? And how do we support them before we're doing a referral to special education?
Is that PD for the broader staff or what does that look like? What do you think that looks like, Angelique? Or I mean, you mentioned that is the system outside of special ed that's driving the costs.
Some of the, some of the activities that Sarah has already undertaken are priorities. You need to have consistent messaging from the top down. So you need your administrators to be trained in UDL and you need to have your leadership team expecting your principals to implement their policies, but you also need that training and capacity from the line staff working with students up. They need to be confident that they have knowledge and skill and sometimes it's really about confidence, not really that they lack skill, it's that they are so busy and right now everyone feels kind of overwhelmed. Schools are stressful places these days. And, but we see so many great teaching practices. And so sometimes it's not, it's getting people to realize I have skill or I have capacity. Here's a training to help me pull the pieces together of things I know how to do well. I'm an experienced veteran. I'm not without skill. I just may have forgotten that I have these back pocket strategies. And so, so I think that it's making sure your messaging is consistent and that the focus is really pure, that, that you have decided that ensuring that students with disabilities are included in the student outcomes that you want to see from your system as a really active and explicit measure. And that will flow from access at early grade levels to literacy programs and intervention to the kinds of mental and behavioral health support they might need into the middle and into high school and ensuring they have access to classes to get them diplomas, not certificate of completion based on the classes that they have to take. And so though, all of those are things that will lead them to have better outcomes.
Any other question?
Do you have a sense that we're over diagnosing on the specific learning disabilities?
I've only read 30 IEPs, so and not all of them are IEPs of students with specific learning disabilities. But as a school psychologist myself, often what we see is that when students don't have access to consistent, really high-quality literacy programs that include a phonemic awareness component, then you lose some students whose need is not quite matched with your curriculum or what every other student gets. And if there's not really robust intervention, there's nothing to catch them up. And so again, I, we saw at a couple of your sites, some intervention that is perfectly tailored to the gap that you, I, I believe you probably have. It's just not everywhere yet and it's not being systematically implemented. But it does appear that probably some of your students who currently have identified a specific learning disability probably could have either been prevented or have gotten intervention that would mean they could get their needs met without special ed.
And in those cases, those sites where you saw the, was it UDL that, that kept the kid in class or?
We saw some sites where you had every single classroom using your core curriculum plus all of the supplemental materials that help access for all learners. You have access for all learners. You have wonders and we saw evidence on every single door and wall and surface. And we also saw some really planned, integrated, aligned, I think they called it walk to learn time, where they were regrouping people so that students could get access to the component they needed in that group. And then there was data monitoring of what they were being exposed to, how it was meeting their needs and bringing them up. And then if that wasn't enough, then they were going to someplace else or getting more. So it was really systematically planned on along every aspect of that system. And so, yes, UDL is a part of it. But what they have incorporated really is a mindset that it's every single adult's responsibility to make sure every single child has access to quality learning and the things that they need. And I'm not saying that doesn't exist everywhere else, but they've made it really explicit and that has really helped them to see outcomes.
Where did that jump out for you?
Can't remember the names of all the sites. They were all so cute. But I can't remember the name of the site. I really should remember it. But we did highlight it in in our in our report to her. And it's a site where you do have some veteran special education staff and you had a veteran interventionist. And all I can see is it's up on the, it's up higher and there's colored rocks out front. I can't remember the name of it. One of the elementary schools.
Yes, yeah.
And also, we went to a charter school, really great going, very similar things we saw at one of your charters too. I'm sorry that I don't remember.
That's okay. Well, what a last one. Can we go back to slide fourteen because I'm still confused about the time base of the revenues? So I get that it's, I mean, the you add the orange with the blue, you get the green, right?
Yes, no, no. No, no, sorry about that. Okay, so the blue is revenue that is restricted to special education. So that will be state revenue for special education and federal revenue for special education. It does not equal the total amount of revenue you need to run a special education program. So if you add the blue bar with your orange bar, that would be closer to what your total, that that is, that is making your closer to what your total expenditure is.
But that's.
That's your contribution from your general education funds or activities that you have coded to goal five thousand or special education activities. And your contribution will include your base funds, your LCFF funds for the education of all students, which you have to provide, and it will include things that you do that are supplemental.
But LCFF isn't here.
LCFF dollars often are included in that orange contribution rate. And it really depends on how you have coded some of the base activities. So actually, one of the things we looked at and talked with Amanda about was that, you know, as a person who was newer in twenty-two, twenty-three, a lot of some, there were some coding that we encouraged her to look at more closely this year because there were some things that maybe were coded to special education that were not necessarily, didn't necessarily belong there. That might have been there because of the management code of who was providing supervision. Or that might have been things that could have been pulled out into base operations without being coded to a goal five thousand code. So this, we run this by specifically saying goal five thousand is things that are special education. And it's all the things that are in there.
Okay. I I amend, I'm still lost. You know why. I mean, because those numbers don't add up. Close to what our ADA.
So I just want to clarify that I didn't work here in twenty-two, twenty-three.
Yes, right. So it's perfect timing for us to say sometimes we come into practices that we might not always understand or agree with. Yeah, so it it is sometimes, it doesn't always like directly align with what you might see as a bottom line for the program because we do divide it by ADA and get a per ADA. And we excluded some things from this, including any cost for South County Consortium, any cost for things that you're not actually directly running like preschool. So there are some things that that you might see as a board member from your two different districts that don't necessarily show up there so cleanly.
When we present the financials, the South County Consortium is included as part of our general fund. So these dollars are going to look very different than the financials as presented. Any other questions or comments that student board members, any big thought? I know there are a lot of acronym or, yeah, acronyms that you probably don't know yet. The big one to know is students with disabilities, SWD. But the rest, you'll you'll learn, you'll learn as you go. Oh, yeah. Sorry. No, you're fine. Go for it.
I just have a, I was struck by a reference to pullout classes. And then, so I was wondering if that's part of what you're looking at for next year is how to address the pullout classes because it sounded like from the report that they're not, they're not working as well as we'd like them to. And also just the, at the high school level, it's not a pullout class, but it's a study skills class. And if that's being looked at as, you know, for consistency and just that kind of.
Yep, that's exactly what my focus is, is looking at the high schools around and junior highs around that study skills. And and for some students, study skills is is absolutely needed and warranted. And for some, we may be looking at maybe a co-top model where that might be more of a way that a student might get their needs met in a class. So we're kind of looking at all of that and making a determination and saying, okay, how is the, because as we all know, a student with a disability has an individualized education plan. And that's what we need to be looking at is how is this individualized for the student and their needs? And what makes the most sense for them to have the positive outcomes we want them to have?
And I think that that really aligns with some of the work from your SIM plan, your compliance and improvement monitoring plan. Because some of your data indicators that you are being monitored on is how much time your students with disabilities are spending in their general education environments. And so when they are pulled out or educated as a group separate from their general education peers, the state and the federal government are monitoring that as a quality indicator. And they want you to have your students spend more time with their general education peers in the general education classroom where possible. So that may be an interesting area of study or information sharing for you all is to learn more about some of the details of that monitoring work.
Any last questions? All right. Thank you both very much for that. With that, I'm going to put us on a five-minute recess. I mean, five minutes, people. All right, seven oh three, we're coming back.
Hey, before in years. Sorry, I just before before people leave, I just wanted to make sure that we give an opportunity to recognize one of our long-term staff members that has served in our district for over twenty-nine years, Lori Dean. She served as a teacher, director, assistant principal of the adult it's program. And and she's transitioning to a new role in a neighboring district. And I just want to make sure that we thank her for for her years of service for.
Like I said in an email, it's been an honor to work here. I went to school here. I have a student of the month in the hallway as a senior in high school. My children went here, my husband went here, my sister, everyone, right? So it's been bittersweet to say goodbye, but it changes good. So, thank you.
Thank you for everything, Lori. All right, seven oh five, all at like six-minute break. On to Healthy Petaluma's presentation on BMI data collection.
Yes, I'd like to invite Ramona Faith from Healthy Petaluma presenting tonight.
Hello, can you guys hear me okay? Great. First of all, I just told Maddie, I said, your your board meetings are so inspiring. I should come, if I had more time, I'd come to all your meetings. The the video that you showed, the beginning of the school, it was fabulous. So let me introduce myself. I'm Ramona Faith. I'm the CEO of Healthy Petaluma, what used to be called or known as Petaluma Healthcare District. We've changed our, we've evolved and changed our name. We're now Healthy Petaluma District and Foundation. So I'm just going to take a moment to share a little bit about healthcare districts because I don't think a lot of you in the room know what healthcare districts are or what they do. So there's about seventy-six healthcare districts in the state of California. We all work together. About a third of them still own and operate hospitals. The other two-thirds are either sold their hospitals, lost their hospitals, changed the hospitals into something different, right? So in nineteen forty-six is when we were formed, which was when many were formed. And basically, they were formed because the end was, the war was ending and people were returning to their communities and they did not have hospitals equipped to care for the, to the, with the influx of of the veterans. So especially in rural areas, and believe it or not, in forty-six, we were very rural. So we were able to obtain funding from the federal government to invest in hospitals so that we could expand hospitals and purchase the need of medical equipment to care for those that are returning from war. So and they used to be called hospital districts, not healthcare districts because they were focused on hospitals. And then, you know, as time went on, they realized that really we're focusing on on healthcare and health. So transition from hospitals to healthcare districts. So we're one of seventy-six. We work with a lot of healthcare districts, especially the healthcare districts that are community-based, one of which is Beach Cities. And I think Emery, where is Emery? Emery's here. Hi, Emery. There you are. I asked, I asked Emery Chen to join us tonight. He is from Beach Cities. He basically oversees the youth services at Beach Cities, school youth services. And he has a master's in education and he's an MSW. And we've worked with Beach Beach Cities for years. So what happens is, as the different districts have different best practices, we have best practices that we share with other districts and other districts have best practices that they share with us. And one of the best practices that Beach Cities has implemented is their BMI data collection with their schools and their partnership with their schools. And we, he has a story to tell and I did add all the information into your board packets. Hopefully you were able to review them, the case study and the report that they give. So our mission is to improve the health and well-being of our community. And our vision is to create healthy communities that where our community members have access, equitable access to the programs and services that they need to promote their health, to remain healthy. So we have partnered with Petaluma City Schools for years. I mean, I've, I am a nurse. Reason I went Yahoo with the students was because someone graduated, someone up there said they graduated from Chico, which I graduated from. So I thought that was kind of cool. But I am a nurse. I received my master's at Sonoma State. Most of my, most of my professional work has been in hospital operations, of which I used to be the administrator of Petaluma Valley Hospital. In two thousand and eleven, I became the CEO of the district, Healthy Petaluma, which really focused on more community health. I really feel I'm in the public health. I'm really in the public health sphere. So there really isn't much that doesn't impact the health of an individual or or community. So I'm, I love what I do. I really do. I love what I do. And we work in a great community. But schools are our partners. They've been partners for years, all of our schools. Petaluma City School is probably the one that we've been most actively involved with because it's the large, one of the largest school districts. But we also work really closely with Old Adobe as well as some of the other smaller schools. So I'm here today to talk a little bit about what we're proposing and when we started this conversation. So in the spring of twenty-four, we contacted Petaluma City Schools and Old Adobe School Districts to talk about how we can collaborate on on identifying or creating a baseline study for BMI data collection for students in first, third, and fifth grades. Now, we are modeling the program after Beach Cities. They include kindergarten, first, third, and fifth, and we're doing first, third, and fifth. And this initiative is actually open to all the schools of Petaluma, not just Petaluma City Schools. So we we reached out to everyone, but we did start with with Petaluma City Schools and Old Adobe and basically asked them, please review this. What is it that you need? What do you think? Is there anything we're missing, any concerns? Because we want to create a process that the school will support. And so we went through that and created some information and and it went out. But I think that there are some concerns that were raised. And so I'm here to answer whatever questions you have about the process and see if if really this is optional, so whether or not you want to move forward or whether or not you don't want to move forward. Why is Healthy Petaluma partnering with the schools to collect BMI data? Well, there's a couple of reasons. One is as we engage with the Blue Zones Initiative, there was a lot of deep dive discovery on on data and how healthy is this community? So one of the indicators was for adults, they identified one out of two adults in Petaluma are overweight or obese. So when I asked about youth data, there was no youth data. So as we engage in an overall healthy community initiative, I want to be able to also know what what the youth data looks like. So over a three-year period, we can measure and see, are our interventions, are our activities, are whatever we're doing impacting not just the adults, but also our youth, right? So we also noticed that there was, there was other indicators around youth that we wanted to include as well. So there's, there's lots of information, like for example, the Youth True Survey. That data is out there. The schools are working on the Youth True Survey. We want to partner with the schools to help the schools address the Youth True Survey results. So that data is also being incorporated into the overall Blue Zones metrics as far as measuring how our community is improving in the overall health and well-being, right? Because if we're going to improve the health and well-being of our community, I want to make sure we're improving the health and well-being of our youth as well as our adults. So since nationally, one out of five children under the age of twenty have obesity, eighteen percent of six to eleven-year-olds are obese. So information that we can glean from a dipstick of where we are in Petaluma with our students will give us just more information to reflect on as we look at our overall health and well-being and where, what interventions we need to implement and where to implement those interventions. The question came up, who will be conducting the data collection? We have, our staff will. We have two community health workers along with Benjamin, who's the community program manager, myself, who's a nurse, will be conducting the BMI collection for the first, third, and fifth graders. The CHWs have received advanced training. They are certified in community health work. They've received, we're all, we've all been trained on trauma-informed practices, which is really important. How will the data be collected? Or how will the data be used? The data will be aggregated and used with other community health measures that we look at as far as our youth. We will be, we will then roll it up and identify what kind of interventions we want to, we want to implement. Now, what's, what's interesting with Beach Cities is that, and I don't want to steal Emery's thunder here, but add whatever you need to Emery. Beach Cities about twelve years ago did a, did a data collection with with the schools within their, within their service area. And there was one school district that they identified a high rate of youth obesity. I believe it was twenty percent. And what they did was they implemented and targeted resources to that school, not all the schools, the school with the highest rate, and they moved from twenty percent to five percent. And that, that, but that was over time. That was over ten years' time with constant investment into this, partnering with the schools. So I think Emery will share a little bit about where where they are at this point because they're probably, they're talking about where do we go, what do we do now, right? Because they've dropped to five percent. It's well below the the national average, right? The participation is optional. Okay, we actually were moving, we were moving forward with an opt-out. Okay, we actually um, we're moving, we were moving forward with an opt-out. In my understanding from the board meeting, the last board meeting, the request was for it to be opt-in. And that's fine, except we will get less participation and we may not get enough participation to make the study may not give us the information that we need because you need so much participation. So I know that Emery used an opt-out. So maybe Emery, um, you can share a little bit about the process that you used at Beach Cities.
Great. Uh, good evening. Uh, Emery Chen, Director of Youth Services at Beach Cities Health District. Uh, I'm a proud uh Bay Area native, born and raised in Hayward. I spent most of my uh early adult life in Berkeley and Oakland, uh, so I'm happy to be here. Thank you for having me. Um, just to give you a little bit of background, uh regarding the Level Kids Program specifically in its inception, uh, Beach Cities Health District launched Level Kids uh back in two thousand seven. Uh, it's a comprehensive school well-being program developed specifically for elementary school children. Um, all kindergartners and fifth-grade students in Redondo Beach Unified School District, which as Ramona mentioned, was our targeted school district. So doing the math, uh, we are entering our eighteenth year of this program. Uh, at that time, uh, two thousand and seven, the uh high rate of obesity was twenty percent. And because of that, we wanted to create a a program that could be a response to that high rate. Uh, and therefore, as Ramona mentioned, uh, just this past spring, which is uh kind of the season that we collect the data, uh which is every springtime in partnership with uh the school district. Uh, we were able to see that since then, uh, two thousand and seven, the obesity rate has gone down for those uh kindergarten, first, third and fifth graders, down to five percent, which is in total a seventy-five percent decline uh during that uh seventeen-year period. Um, so uh, we're pretty uh pleased with the progress, uh while we will never uh necessarily say that Level Kids was the causation of that, but we know that it was uh hopefully uh some level of correlation to to the decline and um, you know, uh, we couldn't have done it without the partnership of the school districts and also um volunteerism of parents that were teaching many of these um uh open-air uh uh lessons that really I could give you more uh information about the Level Kids Program specifically, but uh to summarize it, it's kind of a six uh interactive lessons focused on educating students about the process of and benefits of growing their own food, improving nutritional knowledge and making healthy eating choices. Um, all lessons are delivered, delivered outside. Uh, each of the eight participating schools has a designated uh garden uh that we have provided uh since we started the program and uh the gardens are maintained by volunteers and the lessons are taught by volunteers. Uh, and I have more information regarding the uh BMI collection. We at the time uh did not have access to uh zip code-specific data uh like Ramona. I think, you know, there's limitations to uh having data specifically to youth uh uh within the Beach Cities area, so we uh have uh established an agreement with our school district to collect the data every spring. Um, you know, while there are two specific types of BMI measurement programs, um and they serve very specific purposes, one being surveillance and the other being screening, we are doing it for the purposes of surveillance. And so that's just to identify percentages of students in a school or school district who are either underweight, healthy weight, overweight or obese. Um, uh as opposed to screening, which is to provide parents with information about a child's weight status. We uh only, excuse me, are exercising BMI collection for surveillance purposes and uh we pretty much have used the guidelines of the CDC uh to instill safeguards uh within the process that um one, introduce the program to parents and guardians, students and the schools, of course, because we need buy-in from the schools um as well as making sure that our staff members are are um trained on how to appropriately measure height and weight. And one of the most important ones is kind of ensuring that, you know, that processes in which we collect this information is done in a way where um we're maintaining anonymous information, uh collecting the data only for surveillance purposes and just making sure that um the procedures are just to kind of collect the information and um, I can go into more detail if you have any questions about that.
I don't usually do this, but I'm the president, so I'm gonna go first. Um, I, I understand the need to collect data and I see how BMI seems like the easiest data to collect, but how do we wrestle with the fact that it uh BMI was invented to measure adult white men in Europe in the eighteen hundreds or nineteen hundreds, like it using it on black and brown kids, on women, on girls. Um, I don't know if anyone else here was a teenage girl in the early two thousands, like it was rough, like the talk about weight. Um, I just don't want to instill that in our kids and I don't believe that BMI is actually an indicator of health. I get that it's easy to measure. Um, but I, I'm not going to go on a whole rant on why I don't like BMI, but I I work in public health too. I work for a very large healthcare nonprofit and we don't do BMI. We actually on our little trivia wheel um ask if people know where BMI was invented and why it was invented and that it was invented by a freaking statistician, not a doctor. Um, so that's my little mini rant about BMI and I would love to hear what you both think.
Well, I, I think that BMI is uh, you know, is not necessarily an indicator of health and well-being, but it adding to other indicators gives you a broader picture of the health and well-being of our youth. And um, you know, it it can be done in a manner that's very private and protective and and supportive and whatever. Um, I don't think that there's been a lot of issues. We're looking at Beach Cities and they, they've been doing it for many years and they've had great success, so it can be done. Um, there's a research study in there that talks about, um, I think it was twenty twenty-three that I gave you um from the LA uh uh Department of Health, who said that historically it it hasn't been effective until Beach Cities partnered with Redondo Beach and they're an example of how it can be effective. So again, this is just one way of trying to identify um ways that we can help support and promote uh youth well-being. Um, and again, it's optional. It it's not something that has to be done. Um, but um, it's a, it's a missing piece of information. We'll continue to look at um how we can find the information elsewhere, but uh, there's, we haven't been able to find where somebody can just tell us Pedaluma youth like they've done with the, through the Gallup survey with adults.
I don't think our district is opposed to working with Healthy Pedaluma because like you stated, we have a longstanding relationship. I think Blue Zones, were they here last month or the month before and they talked about the services that they're providing, how they're working with our district, but they never spoke about this. So I think then to hear about it later feels like a bit of a surprise. And then also, I think, you know, like Caitlin was saying, um, like our own school districts or actually the state of California, we don't measure for BMI anymore. And I think it's because there have been studies to show that it is a poor predictor of future health when you're looking at children's BMI. Um, so I, yeah, I'll, I'll start there.
I just want to clarify if I may. This is not, the, this, this, this initiative, this healthy initiative that we're proposing is not coming from Blue Zones. This is coming from Healthy Pedaluma, not Blue Zones.
Is there a way that you can still gather the information without it being in the school, like put out something in the paper on Facebook or something like, hey, if you have children first, third, fifth grade, please come and get weighed at the hospital or the healthcare or something if you're seeking the information. Um, yeah, has that been considered? Another way to gather the BMI?
Well, we've, we've looked at other uh county, we've looked at um DHS. We looked at different places to try to gather. We reached out to the Health Center, reached out to Kaiser. They don't have information specifically to to be able to identify and and be able to target where we want to invest resources in the schools. So um, there, there's, if we got a general whatever, you know, a a number from community and not being able to go for individual schools, um, we can measure it over time with other activities that we're doing within the community, but but in order to invest into a program like Beach Cities has, we have to have specific data at the school to show the impact of the investment. So um, yeah.
And there's no other measurement you can use to show that the students are getting healthier, if that's the goal? What is the goal?
The goal is to uh, the, the goal is to improve the health and well-being of our community and part of that is is the health and well-being of our youth. And um, not just, not just height and weight and BMI and obesity. That's only a, a smidgen of what, what we would identify as healthy students. We've got Youth True Survey, we have school data, we have community health needs assessment, there's lots. That, there's lots. The, it's just one indicator that we simply don't have that if we had, we could add it to the many indicators that we're looking at as far as overall youth and well-being. And we basically, based on the fact we had none, based on the fact we have a community partner that's um, implemented a program that's had great results. That's where this, that's where we're coming from. And quite frankly, if we don't have an issue, great. But if we do, we should know what that is and we should invest in, in, in addressing that. That's all. So.
I definitely understand the need for data and for it to be statistically significant and for us to find. I absolutely agree with all of that, so I'm wondering if there's not another data point that we could be collecting instead of BMI because whether it's how many minutes of exercise a kiddo is getting or what they reported they eat for breakfast. I know that that's more qualitative and more work, but it feels more like an actual indicator of health because, I mean, in the data that I saw, underweight skyrocketed. So you can't tell me those kids are healthier. Some of them might not be fat anymore, but some of them are anorexic or underweight. So I mean, it.
I mean, I think, I think Emery can speak to to that because I asked him about that. When you're looking at the, the underweight.
Oh, we weren't uh particularly looking to track that. We just used the same uh categorization that the CDC did. Um, and so we wanted to make that consistent. Um, uh, I agree with you. Um, President Quentin, that, you know, uh BMI is one of many statistics um, that can be measured and it's not a perfect system. I, I also am very um in agreement of that. I, I think uh for, I guess, kind of baseline purposes, uh, it might uh be informative. Again, you take it with some level of grain of salt. I wish that we could have both qualitative and quantitative data. I think at the time, um, we worked on, it's specifically weight um and BMI for the purposes of measuring the quantitative data. Um, we are considering a number of things, just like um Pedaluma. You know, we started out as a hospital around nineteen ninety-eight. We kind of shifted, so just last year, we kind of celebrated twenty-five years of preventative health. We no longer operate a hospital and so all of our efforts are around prevention. Um, that's kind of our mission is to kind of invest our resources into the preventive, you know, programming for the hope that, you know, um, we don't want to support those once they're sick. And so we want to kind of, you know, be ahead of the game. And so I have kind of parts uh that work with adult services like myself and also older adults. We serve the entire lifespans of of the Beat Cities, and so we have programming that's catered to all um age demographics. And so um we know the limitations. I understand. We also faced similar um concerns around parents asking about you know, the, the methods in which we collected the information. And so for that reason, I, I'm, I'm a former school counselor, also an early childhood educator, a father of two girls. And so these are things that are very important to me, like I try to preserve um, the importance of not um, I guess, creating any potential disturbance. I, I, I understand that and and that's something I take very seriously. I, I, I would even say to the extent that, you know, in my network of uh mental health professionals, um, we have uh an organization down here, South Bay Eating Disorder Coalition, that I have some colleagues in that network that I wanted to make sure that they understood our processes and and that um, the way we collected information was not something that was being discussed. It was not something that the, the children would see. Um, the methods that we did were very um precise in the area of making sure that the height and weight was something that was done very swiftly, quickly, privately, um, not in front of peers and things that we, we could potentially like control. Um, especially uh, you know, following those safeguards that uh were recommended by the CDC to ensure that, you know, it wasn't something that was going to um it was that it would minimize any potential concerns. Um, and we tried our best to make sure that we, we helped to that integrity of of our data collection.
Yeah, I'm just curious, um, I know you mentioned a little bit about eating disorders and mental health. What procedures are in place that for students, as I understand that it's optional for students to participate in this, but what is being done for students who do participate and are informed that their BMI is something that's stigmatized as bad or negative? What is in place to protect them and make them know that there's nothing wrong with that because we do know that BMI is not as accurate as it used to be?
Well, the, the, the students aren't not going to know what the results are. Um, the, it's first, third and fifth graders and they are not going to know what their results are. The staff's not going to know what their results are. We're just rolling it up into a number. It's a dipstick. Nothing's tracked to individuals.
Oh, I thought you said at one point that the parents were notified.
We don't, we are not notifying parents.
Okay, maybe I misheard. I thought there was abortion. Maybe parents are being notified that the data collection is happening.
Yeah, but, right.
Okay.
Yeah, no one's notified. It's, it's simply a dipstick. It's, it's a point in time. So there's no tracking with data to students. Uh, the students aren't gonna know, aren't being told, the parents aren't being told, the staff's not being told. Um, we're just gonna roll up a number and what you will get is what the percentage rate is for your school district.
Um, I really, um, I appreciate this discussion a lot. Um, and I can really see the benefit of doing this youth study. I'm, I don't, I, you know, the BMI question is definitely something that uh is that I'm thinking a lot about. And I'm, I'm, I'm just thinking that we have um, we have as part of our goals and as part of what we're working towards is a nutrition. Um, what, you know,
Curriculum?
Curriculum and district, you know, we're, we're trying to transform all of our uh kitchens and we have gardens at all of our schools, so we're, so we're working on a curriculum for this very thing so that we can teach children, young children and, you know, all children really, but our young children how, you know, what good food is. Isn't it great to have a cucumber, fresh from the garden and um, and that kind of thing. And it feels like the interventions that you were talking about were like, if I heard it right, I, I could be wrong, but that it was uh volunteers that were teaching these very things. And I'm just, it just, it seems like um if we could concentrate more on those kinds of uh practices and interventions, not using BMI because we don't really need it. We know that our kids need this no matter where they are in BMI. Does that, does that kind of make sense? I mean, because it is controversial, we don't know, i- i- we don't know who's going to opt in. And so is there some way that we can maybe develop these other um practices so that, you know, it just, it feels like the BMI is kind of may have worked in two thousand and seven as but in twenty twenty-four, maybe we need to find something else that would be a better measurement or a focus, maybe?
I appreciate that. It's been working though for the last, it's still working for Beach Cities. It started in two thousand and seven.
I understand that. It was significant, but whether the BMI that's driving it or whether it's those practices.
Oh, I, well, no, I, I think. It's not the BMI that's driving it. It's, it's the practices that have been implemented based on the BMI results. And the investment is based on the BMI. And so they're tracking their, the goal is to invest and then track what your impact is. So there has to be some measurement.
Yeah, so it provides the data that you need in order to invest in that.
Right. But I think, I think that um Right. But I think, I think that, um, we're still, we are still looking for global, you know, for, for information for Petaluma. So, I mean, I, I can't believe we don't have information for Petaluma students from somewhere. I mean, we have them for the adults. We don't have them for the students. And again, as we, as we really focus on improving the health and well being of our community, it has to be all members of our community. Right? So, so, um, if we can find, if we can find the data elsewhere, you know, we will certainly use that data. It will not be specific to, it won't be specific. It might be more general. But we can still, um, you know, trend that, you know, trend the results and look at the results over time. But, um, you know, we, we don't, we haven't identified that. We, we, we haven't identified that source. So, um, in the process of the work that we're doing, having a missing indicator, that's what we were looking at to try to emulate, emulate what what our other community partners have done with success. So I understand that if you want the opt in, right? We are asking for the opt out, asking for the opt in. Um, you know, that's we will support whatever it is that the school wants to do. When we started this process and in the, in the spring, we use, we worked with the school to develop this process. We will do whatever the school wants us to do. Um, but if it's an opt in, you know, we probably will not have the numbers that we need to make it significant, whatever. And I think that that's, may not necessarily be because people don't wanna opt in. I think there's a general consensus that people don't respond for, 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 for a variety of reasons. So, you know, that's, that's a challenge that we all have, all schools have. You know, parents are busy and they're overwhelmed and our teachers are busy and overwhelmed and our kids are busy and overwhelmed. You know, it's a, it's a, it's a complex, you know, it's, it's a difficult time. You know, my heart, my heart and soul goes out to the teachers and the, and the staff and the parents that are supporting these kids.
I have a question about collection. I remember doing that when I was in elementary school back when dinosaurs roamed the earth. And we all lined up and it was humiliating and embarrassing. Um, you didn't have the perfect little figure. Um, I also know a lot of first graders that would, might have a very high BMI and it's just because that's who they are. Um, and I'm also concerned, it's around fifth grade that girls start getting these, you know, body image things and what's that gonna do? I mean, we, are we gonna line them up like they did when I went to school? Because it was awful. And I wouldn't, I would not wanna put any of our kids through that. So I'm curious about how it's going to be collected. I know that it's, they're not gonna be assigned to particular students and no one's gonna know. But I wonder if that's really true. If it's gonna get out somehow or, you know, kids are gonna find out and oh, you know, all of a sudden they'll be using BMI as another way to tease each other. So I guess I'm just concerned about how it's collected. Um, I appreciate the fact that you said that no one's gonna really know. But I'm, I'm wondering if that's really the case.
Well, we're gonna put every measure in place that it's confidential and private. I mean, is it physical? Oh, it's physical.
It's physical. So how, how, okay, so you're at one of our elementary schools. And you have these kids whose parents opted in. Um, how exactly would you be doing the BMI measurements? Would it be during PE? Would it be in front of everybody else? How would it be done?
It wouldn't be in front of anybody else during PE. Um, I don't think it'll be during PE. Um, but that's something that will work with, with Esmeralda. I mean, we have a, an entire list of step by step which, which we've shared with, with, with Esmeralda. And Molly Nagel actually at the time, because we were working with Molly Nagel and Esmeralda last year. Um, but we're not, we're not, there's not a sign out there that says BMI. We're not even gonna measure B, we're not even gonna say BMI. You know, we're, we're gonna collect some data to help, help make your school healthier. We're not gonna be talking about BMI. So, um, I know the information to, we explain it that way for the, for the teachers, obviously, and the, and the staff, but it's just a process to collect some data information to see where we sit, to see where we need to invest.
But how and where are you gonna be collecting that data?
Well, it'll depend on what Esmeralda wants, wants us, where we wanted to do that. So it's gonna be private. It's gonna be in a room. People aren't gonna be watching. People can come in one at a time or we can go to the class and bring somebody out. I don't know, whatever, whatever the school and the teacher feels is most comfortable for the students. And parents are welcome to be there, but the problem is parents, it's a private situation. So we were even told that some of the kids don't want their parents there because, you know, there's maybe some issues going on at home. So, you know, we, we can't really do that either. So but we're, we're open to do however, however's most comfortable really driven by what the school wants us to do.
Ramona, is this really like a have to? I mean, because if you're saying that you need this information, okay, thank you. Nevermind.
No, it's, it's not, it's, it's not a have to. This is optional. But as we work with our schools and as we invest in our schools, we need to be able to track our impact on our investments.
But if, so I think Maddie was referring to in the presentation materials, it was talking about that the Beach Cities did things like implement more fruits and vegetables, uh, more vegetable gardens, nutrition classes taught by parent volunteers, walking school buses, more movement time. Can't we just do all of those things and like track like, hey, kids, at the beginning of the school year, you get fifteen minutes of exercise a day. By the end, you get thirty grades. We improved in that area. There's, you know, four school gardens now. There's twenty. I don't know. I just I don't understand why we can't just do those things and measure those outcomes.
Those are outcomes though. Those are, those are things that we've done.
So the outcome is, is the decreased BMI.
Well, it could be other, I mean, it could be mental health too, right? I mean, if you're out and about and you're eating healthy and you're feeling good, it impacts your mental health too. But doing interventions isn't necessarily meaning you're having an impact. It just means you're doing interventions. So there's other ways of looking at it. I'm not saying there isn't other ways of looking at it, but yes, there's a lot going on with the schools right now. Um, is it, is it, is it working? Is it impacting the health of the kids? I don't know, you know? I don't know.
Well, we just, we just started this initiative and we just hired Brian. And, um, yes, yes.
Brian's a rock star.
Brilliant.
He's a rock star.
And so I think that it's just established, he's had a great committee that has a lot of student involvement, participation and, um, uh, involvement. And so, you know, it's just starting.
Yeah, my understanding is that, you know, BMI is, is a poor uh, measure of personal health, but it's a decent measure of public health. And that's what you're kinda after. But I've, uh, but I also know that, you know, it can be collected in other ways, including like surveys. I know there were liability issues, but it gets around a lot of these other issues. And if you ask parents, it might be more accurate than if you ask students. Um, I, I, I wanted to know, uh, is this study subject to human subjects protections?
Is it?
Human, human subjects protection is, is healthy Petaluma, does it receive any federal dollars?
Are we receiving federal dollars for this project? No?
No, no, not for this project. Does your institution receive any federal dollars?
I don't believe so.
Yeah. Is this research going to be published?
I'm not planning on it, but if we have great success, maybe we publish it like Beach Cities. But the goal is not to publish a research. You know, um, again, it's, it's, it's just.
Okay, I was.
Baseline information.
If it had been subject to human subjects protections and had been approved by an R and B, I'd have a lot more comfort with saying, okay. But it's, but it's not. Um, and I'm, and also I'm just curious, I, I saw that, you know, part of the way we interpret BMIs is gonna be based on age and gender by the CDC's um, categorization. So I'm, I'm curious how gender is categorized.
We'd be categorizing gender, male, female.
No transgender.
Like assigned at birth or not? Like, what do you mean, male, female?
I don't know, actually. I mean, that's a good question. I mean, I think that we should probably do gender, but I mean, we wouldn't have to do gender the first cou- I mean, the first couple of years and see how it goes as far as just the number.
I could see the data being heavily biased against transgender children in our district. Not only going through the process of being measured, but then being misidentified.
Yeah. So we wouldn't do gender? We would just do number?
No, but uh, maybe just be honest and say, this is not indicative of transgender children. You know, I mean, you know, if you, if we're gonna stick with the binary gender, let's just be honest about it and uh, but, you know, we have plenty of transgender children in our district.
Right.
And uh, if we, at least if we're honest about it, then we'll subject them to the humility of having to do this. Uh, um, it's just another concern.
Yeah. Well, we, uh, I, the, the way to alleviate that would be just not to collect anything other than the, the res- the, the data point. Because we, I mean, we don't wanna cause more confusion or disheart- I mean, that's not the goal. The goal is just to get a, just to kind of get a feel for. Does it matter? Yeah, that's a good point.
Um, back to the point of how can we do this to reduce any embarrassment or any shame at these elementary schools? Is it realistic to just send a survey to all the parents of the first, third and fifth graders? That way it's not on campus around anyone. The students know. It can be done in the privacy of their own homes.
I, I'm open to explore whatever works.
I've done that. I, I have a published article on, with BMI in it and it was based on survey data. It's not as accurate as what you're describing, but it also doesn't go through all of the, all of this discussion that we're having right now.
Right. Um, I'm open to explore whatever. I mean, and the bottom line is it has to work for the school and the students and the parents, but the school and the students, right? So I'm open to that. And we're still exploring how we can get the, the, the number elsewhere. You know, we, we just, we wanna be able to we, we should, we all should wanna know if we have an issue. And if we have an issue, be able to identify strategies to alleviate or help address the issue. Um, in a way that doesn't stigmatize, doesn't make people feel uncomfortable or whatever, because that's not the goal. But um, there's, you know, there's lots of things to consider, but you know, those who are overweight at a younger age tend to be overweight at an older age and overweight leads to other complications. So, you know, if we can address some of the issues early on, um, in a, in a, in a caring and then eh, way and, and manner, that's what we wanna do. Do I think it's gonna be bringing accurate numbers? Well, I don't know if a survey will, um, but we don't know. Um, it's not gonna be accurate numbers if the, if the number of participation is so low, right? So, I mean, um, if, if everybody was able to be, uh, have height and weight done and roll that up, that would be pretty accurate as far as what the percentage is with Petaluma students. But, you know, because of some of the issues uh, and concerns that were identified tonight, we stayed away from the high school and junior high kids age. And we s- uh, started with the younger kids. And again, Beach Cities, that's, that's the process that they use and it's been very successful. So again, we're trying to model after, after that, a program. I don't, I think that would, I, 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 I would love to, but I, I think that, um, I think it's more difficult for high school students because of image and weight and bullying and that kind of stuff. I mean, it's, it's, it happens, right? So that's why we stayed away from high school and junior high kids. Cause the goal is not to make things uncomfortable or difficult. The goal is just to try to figure out if we can find a data point so that we can start tracking, investing in tracking. So.
And I think Emory has his hand raised. So Emory, I was interested if there's anything you wanted to add.
Yes, um, I wanted to address, um, uh, for Member Webster's concern around kind of, I, I, I am old enough to remember those uh, BMI collection days, unfortunately. And, and I think um, I, we, we use that as a, or at least I personally in, in directing this process, um, I wanted to make sure that um, we did the opposite of that. And so in terms of, I can only speak and I, I can't, maybe we could, you know, help um, uh, consult, you know, Ramona through the process, but we were very specific around um, it being during the school day. Uh, um, and I think really important, first and foremost, the communication around it. I, I think I wanted to make sure that we were as transparent as possible. And when I say transparent, it was not just with the school partners, but also with the parents. What this process was and what it wasn't. I think that's so key, uh, to make sure that's, um, clear from the, from the beginning. Um, and, but in terms of how the, eh, the collection was done, we were able to work with each respective school to designate like a, a room, a free room that was not being used uh, during a particular period. And then, uh, classrooms would be kind of pulled out. Um, uh, and then the individual would be pulled, uh, asked to come in, uh, to the room, uh, without having the other peers present. Um, the other thing that was really important was that we used a, uh, SECA seven, seven scale. It's, it's basically a scale medical grade scale that, um, has the height, um, scale on it and the individual that's being measured, uh, actually faces backwards. So they don't even see the, the screen, that screen also. I wanted to just in case, make sure that the screen was covered with an index card. So, um, it would just be the, the assessor that just would kind of glance at it and put it down and raise and measure their height. The from start to finish, probably took fifteen seconds per kid. Um, uh, and so just to ensure that that, the, the individual being measured wouldn't even know their information. And you better believe for anyone that's working with kids, they're, they're gonna ask, I think, when they're wondering like, what is this for? And we really wanted to work with our staff to, um, even have particular verbiage for the youth. Cause I think it's how you explain something to a child and a student is um, maybe different than you would explain to a parent and also to the teachers that are involved because obviously parents interface the most with the pr- the teachers as well as kind of how we would explain these to the principals. Um, and so we would, you know, uh, have to regretfully decline and, and not be able to tell them what the measurement was. And they'd run, run off and that would be it. Um, and to address, um, the opt out option, and we took that very seriously. Cause we want to respect people's desire to not have this done if they didn't want it done. And so we made sure that, um, the week and even the days leading up to any given schools, um, uh, designated day of measurement, that we would be communicating with the principal, that we have X amount of people that have filled out the, um, that we use smart sheet. Uh, smart sheet form that asks that they didn't have, they wanted to opt out of having their child measured. Then we would provide that list to the principal and make sure that those children were specifically not pulled out. Um, again, I'd say it was probably ten to eleven percent of those students in our, uh, Redondo Beach uh, district that chose to opt out. And we wanted to make sure we honored that and that, um, you know, we didn't wanna make people do anything that they didn't wanna do. And so, um, and going back to, I guess, the, uh, the other question around kind of um, ensuring that, uh, that there were no concerns around, uh, self-image issues or, or, or any discussions around that. And that's why like, we were very rigid about how we collected it, how we kept the information. And only if there was an option for, um, for families, if they wanted the information, they could request and say, I would like a report. And, and, and for those that did want it, we would provide it. But other than that, information was not sent home. There's no discussion uh, amongst parents and their children, because we wanna make sure that also it's not like, hey, look, you know, uh, uh, we have this information of your child and here's what we gathered. The parents wouldn't know this information unless they requested it, unless they requested it specifically.
And we're, we're choosing not to share with parents. It's not that we can't. I mean, if the school wants us to, we would, but we're choosing not to share with pa- parents.
Any other questions or comments? I'm leaning mostly in favor of Ava's great idea of um, letting parents collect it themselves or if, or how, like if they've recently had their kid go to the health um, health center or Kaiser. or ha- like if they've recently had their kid go to the health um health center or Kaiser, whoever their healthcare provider is. Um, we, I don't know, I I still just don't love BMI as an indicator of health. And I don't want our schools to be perpetuating that so obviously by physically doing it in our in our buildings. And yeah, that's just where I'm personally at. I don't know if anyone
Just a point of order. This isn't an action item, right?
Right, exactly, yeah.
It's not an action item, but um I can work with Esmeralda offline. We're not going to do anything that that you don't want us to do. Okay, I mean, we are a partner of the of the school. The in all the information he just shared about the process was shared with the school in in spring. Um, and it was reviewed with the school in spring. So um there's no surprises there with the understanding that if there's other changes we have to make or, you know, other suggestions that that the staff or the board has. Uh, we we started in the spring hoping that we wouldn't be at this point now having the conversation, because it takes time to prepare it, right? So um as I mentioned before, it's we're working with all the schools, not just Pedaluma City Schools. Um, Esmeralda, you know, you 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 we'll talk offline and I'll follow whatever direction you have. If this isn't the right thing that you guys want to do, then we we won't do it. Um, but we may be doing it with other schools, which is
And it sounds like on our end, we need to make sure our communication, whatever happens with families is better and more thorough. Um, and yeah.
Absolutely. This was step one to bring Ramona to be able to provide all of the information for you to be able to ask questions and then figure out our next steps after that. So, yep, great.
So I I appreciate, thank you so much, Emery. For coming. I I I thought it would be very helpful for you guys to hear from him since they've implemented it. Um, and I want to thank you for your time and for allowing me to come. I want to recognize the this the students that are joining this board. Congratulations to you. Um, but uh let me know, and um we'll we'll go from there. We will continue to though to look at if we can find it elsewhere, but we're hoping to be able to move forward with um data collection uh in October.
Thank you both for coming.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thanks, Emery.
All right, and now we're moving on to comments from the public on special recognition reports, presentations, and non-agendized items. If you have a public comment on something that's not on the agenda or anything that has already happened, now is your time to do that. I'm going to read out the thing.
Can I just ask one question? I'm sorry. I'm sorry. Um, do I have two minutes just to show a closing um video?
Yes, I'll allow it.
Will you?
I will.
I promise. It's two and a half minutes. I'm sorry.
It's okay. We'll count it as your public comment.
Yeah, it's just a, it's just a, it's just a kind of rules up what we've been talking about.
What I think uh makes our school district special, and having been in this business over thirty years, uh I can I can say this with conviction, is that we have the Beach Cities Health District. No other community has an organization so focused on our students' health um and integrated into the very fabric of our programmatic pieces, the educational academic pieces.
This program uh through our school district is amazing, because it's supported by the Beach Cities Health District. And they're the ones that are behind everything that goes on. And if they weren't here, then I don't think these programs would exist.
Thanks to our partnership with the school district, we were able to develop programming and address childhood obesity by improving nutrition and exercise more than a dozen years ago. Several years later, Beach Cities Health District brought the Blue Zones Project to the community to specifically address the health needs of the adult population by using permanent evidence-based environmental and policy changes in schools, workplaces, restaurants, businesses, and city governments. These changes have also positively impacted students by making the healthy choice the easy choice for residents of all ages.
Thank you. All right, so now I'm going to read my super fun language about public comment. Under Government Code Section five four nine five four, members of the public have the right to address the governing board on any items of interest, providing it relates to the subject matter jurisdiction of the school district. While government code allows speakers to criticize the district's policies, procedures, programs, services, and or employees, the district does have a policy specific to complaints against employees. Should comments from the public pertain to a specific district employee, the board requests that the complaint first be submitted in writing to the employee's immediate supervisor for investigation. If the comment is about something that is not on the agenda, it will be heard only during the public comment on non-agendized items period, that is right now. Once that part of the meeting is over, comments will only be taken on agenda items during the discussion of those items. The board values public comments, and although we cannot take action or discuss items not on the agenda, we listen carefully and appreciate input from the public. Public comments are subject to a three-minute-per-person limit or twenty-minute limit per subject matter. Commenters may not cede their time to others. And somehow I still haven't memorized all that. Sorry, folks. Um, so first up, we have Kathy Chambers.
Uh Kathy Chambers, retired uh cla- um classified employee, and this is my tenth year teaching garden classes at Valley Vista School. Um, it sounds like you haven't made a decision yet, so I will come back the next time you're discussing this. But I just wanted to address this because I watched the video. I read all the literature that you received. When I saw this was on the agenda, and I feel like um Maddie said that every grammar school ha- at Pedaluma City Schools has a garden. Um, I feel like when I'm teaching, I'm addressing all this. I'm giving students multiple um kinds of vegetables and fruits to taste every time they come to the garden. Um, so I just was wondering, when it said volunteers were coming into the garden to teach about nutrition and in the school garden, when you read what they were doing at the other school, their whole pamphlet, it addressed all that component. So that's what I was concerned about, who the volunteers were, et cetera. But we haven't reached that point if we're even doing this. So it's kind of a moot point, but I just wanted to throw that out. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. I was thinking of your lovely garden when I was thinking about that. Yeah, Valley Vista's got an amazing garden, and thank you for all you do.
Next up, we have Liz.
And thank you for all you do.
Next up, we have Liz.
Hello, my name is Liz Carrasco. Um, I'm a parent of two children in the school district and an alumni as well, attending PCS schools from kindergarten through twelfth grade. And I would like to encourage you to reconsider your agreement with Healthy Pedaluma, or however that's working out, um, to collect the height and weight measurements from our first, third, and fifth graders. Despite assurances of privacy and anonymity, the simple act of being measured at school invites discussion and comparison of body size and appearance and sets the stage for bullying as well as body image issues. And as a parent of two school-aged children and a former child myself, I know that does not wait until middle school or high school. Um, even the CDC has concern that such actions can be detrimental to a student's mental health. And I can already tell that the district's mental health services are taxed as it is. I would also like to note that BMI is outdated and not a complete indicator of a person's overall health. Um, consider the Olympics and the many sizes, shapes, and BMI levels represented by world-class athletes. My own child trains competitively for soccer three days a week plus games, and when I use um a recent health visits uh measurements in a BMI calculator, he fell into the overweight category. Many experts will say the same thing more eloquently than I can. And um finally, the data they are looking for can and should be sourced in other ways. Aggregate data is available in a way that does not stigmatize a child or compromise their mental health and safety at school. While I can appreciate Healthy Pedaluma's purpose to promote and support healthier schools and communities, this method of data collection runs counter to that goal. I have heard from many current and former educators, health professionals, and PCS community members members who feel similarly to me. And I would also like to draw attention to the section in um their statement that um shows a preference for families to opt out versus opting in. That reads to me that they would rather trick families into participating rather than gaining fully informed consent from them. Uh, please consider all facets of our children's health when you make these sorts of decisions, and thank you for listening.
Thank you, Liz. And next up, Mary Beth. You told me you weren't gonna come, and then you you came anyway.
And I didn't prepare my comments, because I was sure I wasn't gonna come. I'm a very proud PCS teacher. I'm a parent, and I'm an eating disorder survivor. I'm also a huge, huge fan of Healthy Pedaluma and personally a huge fan of Ramona. And I'm sorry she's not here to hear me say that, but let's make sure she knows in this takedown. I'm a huge fan of her and of Healthy Pedaluma. And I'm also loathe to speak in conflict of people that I admire and feel such loyalty to, like PCS board and administration. Besides the concerns brought up about why and how BMI was developed and who it was meant to measure, the issue and besides the fact that the sample size that we get might not even be enough to be statistically significant, it's also going to represent the portion of our demographics that have parents who read permission slips, sign permission slips, put them in the backpack, or hit parent square, or however it's done. So it's only going to represent a certain demographic. It's not reliable data. And what are we going through to get unreliable data? My concern is that kid. I skipped PE every day for a year, because I knew I was going to get weight at school, and I didn't want my teacher looking at my body. Every day for a year, I skipped PE. For those kids that are underweight or overweight or short or tall, there's a very narrow window of what's considered an acceptable body size, especially in elementary school. And for any kid that's outside of that window of what's normal, I know it's going to be done in private. We're not weighing kids in front of the class. But everyone's going to know. He said it himself. They talk about it. It creates discussion. You think they're not going to chuckle when like the chubby kid or the short kid or the thin kid comes back in the classroom? As a PCS community, we are going to hands down create the environment that those kids wake up every morning terrified of, and we're going to create it. And I know there was one more thing. He's old. Can you stop the clock? Oh, yeah, it's this. Would you agree to being weighed to be, would you agree to be weighed at work for the purpose of data collection? Would you agree in front of your colleagues to march off to the nurse's office to get weighed? And we're grownups. We have coping skills. We've had a lifetime of comfort or discomfort in our bodies. If we wouldn't agree to do that as adults, why would we put our children through that? And it was that moment at home like ten minutes ago, when I was like, Eric, drive me, that I thought of that and decided to come talk to you, and I hope I didn't ruin my career. Goodbye.
Thank you. All right, and next up, we have Peter. Yeah.
Good evening. Um, Peter Costas, um trustee for SCO Area Two. And I just wanted to come here tonight and um wish you a best start of the school year and um, you know, best wishes to you, Dr. Madrigan, you know? Um, and um congratulations, Daniel and Olivia and Ava for being on the school board. That's you're going to be very important to be on this board and hear your student voices. And just really quickly, just what I wanted to say is, you know, school boards are very important. You know, they provide a lot of leadership. They provide a lot of stability to support their superintendents, their their teaching staff, their classified staff, their parents in the community. And, you know, this year uh we have an election, and I understand that you're going to have two seats that are um that are going to be vacant this year. And you're also going to have two interim superintendents. So for me, I I I, this is just my personal thought, that you've been a great board. You've provided a lot of stability. What, now, six years? I and um I think it's really important with um the transition with Matt taking a year off and two interim supes and um that this board stays as cohesive as possible. So again, thank you for your service, and Sheldon, best wishes to you.
Thank you so much, Peter, and thank you for your service representing us up at the county level. And yes. And next up, we have Heather.
I'm actually
Okay, there you go. Perfect. Um, all right, thank you all, public, for your public comments. And let's take a three-minute break. Three minutes, perfect. Eight seventeen. All right. So we'll let we'll let our student board members go home and start their homework. But I'm reconvening this meeting at eight nineteen. And so we're moving on to adoption and approval of the agenda. Do I hear a motion?
I move to adopt and approve the agenda.
A second.
Great. Um, first up, appointment of the acting superintendent to secretary. We are secretary is somewhere in Europe, so can we, can I please have a motion to um appoint our acting superintendent to secretary?
Move to move our acting superintendent to secretary.
Second.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Um, did we vote on the agenda? I think we just skipped that part. Um, all in favor of approving the ad- adopting and approving the agenda? Aye.
Aye.
All right, both of those passed in wonky order. Robert will forgive me. Um, and now I'm going to report on activities and correspondence of school board members. It has been a month since we met, so forgive me, it is it is a a long list. And this is not including the student board members. Board trustees attended a meeting with city council member Posake, a meeting with Home First Pedaluma Professional Development Day at Casa Grande, a Safe Routes to Schools Task Force Meeting, the McKinley PAX Back to School Event, an Ed Source webinar on adult ed promises and challenges, the Pedaluma Blacks for Community Development Annual Picnic, a gender review with the acting superintendent and deputy superintendent, a meeting with the future board trustee for Area One, two meetings with representatives from Sheet Metal Workers Union, a meeting with of the Sonoma County Junior Commission on the Status of Women, a meeting with the North Bay Building Trades Council, a Casa tennis parent- tennis parents meeting, two one-on-one meetings with teachers, one one-on-meeting with a former student board member, two one-on-one meetings with a high school student, a meeting with the campaign manager for Measure I for the Childcare Initiative, and other back-to-school nights at Cherry Valley, Pen Grove, and Valley Vista. Does anyone have anything in there they want to highlight or talk about? The Junior Commission on the Status of Women is full of students from Pedaluma, which is very exciting, and they are very impressive um young leaders. So it's very exciting, and I am somehow going to mentor some of them in all in all my free time. So, moving on to comments from the public on consent items. If you have a comment on anything under number twelve, please bring one of these fun little half-sheets up to my dear friend Bree up here. But seeing no one making a run for it, I'm going a Safe Routes to Schools Task Force Meeting, the McKinley PAX Back to School Event, an EdSource webinar on adult ed promises and challenges, the Petaluma Blacks for Community Development Annual Picnic, a gender review with the acting superintendent and deputy superintendent, a meeting with the future board trustee for Area One, two meetings with representatives from Sheet Metal Workers Union, a meeting with of the Sonoma County Junior Commission on the Status of Women, a meeting with the North Bay Building Trades Council, a Casa tennis tennis parents meeting, two one-on-one meetings with teachers, one one-on-meeting with a former student board member, two one-on-one meetings with a high school student, a meeting with the campaign manager for Measure I for the Childcare Initiative, and other back-to-school nights at Cherry Valley, Pen Grove and Valley Vista. Does anyone have anything in there they want to highlight or talk about? The Junior Commission on the Status of Women is full of students from Petaluma, which is very exciting, and they are very impressive um young leaders. So it's very exciting and I am somehow gonna mentor some of them in all in all my free time. So moving on to comments from the public on consent items. If you have a comment on anything under number twelve, please bring one of these fun little half-sheets up to my dear friend Bree up here. But seeing no one making a run for it, I'm going to assume we don't have any comments from the public. So move on to the consent agenda. Do I hear a motion?
I move to approve the consent agenda.
A second.
All right. Does anyone have any questions or comments about anything on the consent agenda?
Yeah, I think I have one. I think it's on the consent agenda. I'm just checking here. Is it, is the consent agenda that has caps?
Yes.
Okay. So um this is a something for the board to think about. Uh, Dan Osterman reached out to me, you know, in real in with respect to us having caps in the uh consent agenda. And it's a renewal of the contract. And so you all recall the the panel of students who did a, you know, research project for us that informed us how to uh in in their case, how to be more energy efficient. Dan is soliciting ideas from us and any stakeholders on what that this year's cap students might uh research for us. And um while I really was impressed and appreciated the report that the students did last year, I my my sole kind of hesitation with it was it really didn't take advantage of of the kind of data that students could get that adults can't, which are other students' opinions and behaviors and that kind of stuff. So in my head, I'm trying to think about, you know, what kind of study could the students be put on that measures peers' attitudes and behaviors around something um related to our uh sustainability goals. So it might be waste and solid waste management, might be nutrition and food or something like that. But that that was what popped in my head. But if if any of you have any other ideas, Dan Osterman is looking for ideas is is soliciting ideas.
That's great. Along those lines with caps, um Dan also reached out, I think because we're on the committee. And um yeah, we talked about a lot of it, but I think um one of the things um that I wanna want, you know, them to think about along with what they're gonna do is how do we follow up? Um, and so um how do we actually follow through with the recommendations from the last report? Which were around um, you know, uh, energy use, infrastructure, and behavioral and educational elements. Um, so just kind of think about what with the new group, you know, how are they gonna build on what has already been established? And then kind of and a kind of a guarantee of next step so that we have this process that can just continue to build. Um, and also um we were talking about the Green Ribbon Schools application that's due in November. And so my understanding is that um the interns, the data that they collect is what goes into that application. So I just want to make sure that they're that they have access to all of the information, the district data that they need. Um, and that the um also this data can be used to apply for grants, for state and federal grants uh to provide, you know, really a lot of money for HVAC and other needed facilities improvements. Um, and so that maybe we won't have to um pull needed these needed monies from the bond if the bond passes. So anyway, just along with that, um that the caps, I was really impressed with them. I think it's great. I love the program.
One idea I literally just had for data that they could collect from their peers is if they get to school by driving themselves or if one parent, like one parent drives one student or how many people are carpooling and maybe encourage more people to carpool, build infrastructure for people to easily find other people that live near them. That's just a thought. I'll try and remember to email Dan. Dan, if you're watching, that's my idea.
And, you know, they could ride their bikes.
Yes, as long as they have safe routes to schools, they can ride their bikes.
To schools. Okay, I have, I also have.
Go for it.
Sorry. Um, so under Business Services, I had uh questions about three of the contracts that were listed. Um, they were all consulting services. I did talk to um Amanda about it, and so I just wanted her to share with everybody um the context and de- details about why we're using them. I just saw School Services in action and I hadn't made that connection. So they they obviously are quite valuable. So.
We love School Services.
Yeah, yeah, they were good.
Yeah. So um I received an email about three contracts. The first is for School Works, which we are um would like to contract them with an updated demographic and an enrollment projection study. We did do one last year, which showed six uh five years out. Um, our enrollment within our district um at our elementary sites has vastly changed this year over our projections. And we did bring on our new um dual-language immersion academy, which was not part of last year's projections. Um, we would like to move forward with this be based. This is how our funding is based in trying to get a better picture of what our enrollment in future years is going to be as we use those numbers specifically for our budgets.
Do we conduct exit interviews or, you know, if someone's leaving the district or moving to a different elementary school, why do we do that?
I am going to look down this way because I do not.
Last year, to my knowledge, we didn't, but when Matthew ran the SLAC, the Superintendent's Lay Advisory, the year before, we sent out an extensive survey to anyone who had left the last two years in um several grades. So we targeted, we seem to see a lot of people leave before sixth grade and or at sixth grade and then eighth grade. So we did get that data um a couple of years ago.
Yeah. Can we see that data at a later meeting perhaps? Or, yeah. Yeah, even just as a short little five-minute. We'll see. I know it could. It could be a whole hour. We, who knows with us. All right. And um I think there were two more contracts you were gonna talk about. So the second contract with School Services of California is primarily for attendance training for our site clerks and our principals. Um, this training is essential as it addresses the funding loss identified in our fiscal year twenty-four audit, um which will not be coming forward for a few months, but we're seeing discrepancies with specifically our independent study. Some of the way we code um our in-school and out-of-school suspensions, which is creating uh funding loss. So this is to train all principals and sites, school secretaries um on the proper way for attendance and enrollment accounting. And the third one is a contract with Ryland Consulting, who we've used in previous years at the Business Department. We would like to contract with them um to help us with our year-end closing over two weeks. The Business Department is down a budget tech and a coordinator of budget and counting for the last few months. So just a little extra hands to make sure that we meet the county's timelines.
I really appreciate that, you know, that you did that and that it was so quick.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments on anything on the consent agenda? All right, um, all in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Any extension? All right, the consent agenda passes unanimously. So now comments from the public on action items. So if anyone would like to make a comment on any of the action items, uh, please fill out a one of these little white cards. Yeah, do you guys wanna? Um, I think you're all here for item fourteen point two point two. You can also fill them out after if you want to speak first and then fill out the card. Might as well, yeah. Yeah. But Dave, can you put up the timer for three minutes?
Sure. Uh, my name is Michael Allen, and I'm the Secretary Treasurer of the North Bay Building Trades. I want to ta-talk three minutes to you about BMI, which is building more intelligently. So um
Nice.
Essentially, just uh just the first thing I wanted to say is I want to thank you for your service. I can't tell you, a lot of my work is staying very long hours with with boards wrestling with very difficult issues. The most recent thing is I I I was at a five-hour hearing of the Earthquake Authority. These were volunteers who were appointed by the governor to deal with earthquakes, and then they were saddled with legislation regarding wildfires. And so they're trying to allocate dwindling amounts of money to all the people in the Tubbs Fire that was one of the first fires in the North Bay without adequate funds to compensate them because they're underinsured. For the for the topic at hand, uh, we're talking about a partnership with you in terms of trying to um uh do uh uh it's usually they're called workforce uh uh community workforce agreements. Sometimes they're called project labor agreements. But essentially they're uh to uh do construction and maintenance agreements. And and probably the simplest way to explain them is just like you have collective bargaining agreements with teachers. This is a collective bargaining agreement where you're 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 basically uh agreeing to have eighteen of the uh trades, the trade unions of the AFL-CIO, do your maintenance work, your your construction work, and do it in a very organized manner uh where essentially you're assured that the work is gonna be done on time, no work stoppage, just that sort of thing. Normally, um, we recommend that you find one person that you assign to work with us, like for instance, with the city of Santa Rosa, we had a very successful relationship because their superintendent basically meets with us on an ongoing basis to make sure we understand what's what the work is being called for and how it should be organized and done. If you've done any research on uh PLAs or community workforce agreements, the literature is all over the place. The Rand Corporation says, oh, uh, they're they they cost eighteen percent more to do. Uh, they're 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 a boondoggle. Uh, they're not a good thing to do. Uh, if if you look at the research done by UC Berkeley, basically, they say that they're one of the most efficient ways to do the work. My personal opinion is that every project and construction uh kind of thing that is done is very much dependent on the quality of the management and then how organized you are in terms of of approaching the work to get it done. You can also, you can always point to fiascos like the Great Dig in Boston that was a mess because it wasn't properly planned. The AFL-CIA was involved in that, but it had to do with with uh 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 not being properly planned or the materials not being there. There's other projects with with labor uh involved where they're, they came in way under budget. So it's all over the map. But we see ourselves as partners. Myself, I've been in this community a mere fifty years and um I've worked, I've worked on the Smart Train. I was the first person to work on the Smart Train. I was the original treasurer for that group. We canvassed a hundred thousand homes to get it passed, and we have other speakers, but we want to partner with you.
Thank you, Michael. Do either of you wanna add anything?
All right. Well, I'm Gary Vire with the She-Mail Workers Local One-O-Four. Um, let me give you a little bit on the PLA, what it is for us and it's Project Labor Agreement, but we like to prevailing wage, local hire and apprenticeship program. I'm gonna give you a little bit on that. Um, prevailing wage is our wage. This agreement says you'll pay our wage, just which gives you enough to live in the local area, right? It's expensive to live here. And it keeps the communities. And with local hire, I'm gonna go to local hire. Local hire means our local people are gonna build your schools or upgrade your schools. Um, myself, I have about a hundred members in Petaluma itself that could come work in Petaluma. And that keeps the money flowing and Petaluma keeps small businesses going, all that. Um, and the apprenticeship program is, we are the state-approved apprenticeship program. You had the little kid in the screen said he wanted to be a tradesman. We are a five-year apprenticeship. It's free. They make money while they go to school. They get paid to go to school. Our apprenticeship, you, when you're done with it, you get an A degree through Full Hill College. Um, and that's, you know, that's just kind of short and sweet. And I also, if you guys have any questions for me that, you know, I've got a minute and a half left, so, so.
We can ask questions later when the item's up. Yeah.
But that's all I really got about it. It's just short and simple.
Thank you. All right. Thank you all. If the two of you could just fill out these cards real quick um before you leave, but I have a feeling you're not gonna leave right this second. Um.
Gentlemen.
I keep not rushing the stage. Are you, you gonna come and talk or no?
Jeff Hollingsworth, uh, She-Mail Workers One-O-Four as well. I'm here for moral support. Uh, yeah, so Gary's our new rep out of the North Bay. Uh, but yeah, we're for obviously labor and support of that, but also the apprenticeship program, training, you know, uh, to allow people to uh, as Gary said, keep, you know, uh, that uh, money local uh for people to live in these areas that are expensive where we live, but we also train you know, young people for the trades to to be able to do that work. Um, and so we're, 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 we're very, you know, in support of doing that and support of the PLA. So, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you all three and for sitting through everything else we covered tonight. All right. So now we'll move on to action items, and our first one is Resolution twenty-four twenty-five dash zero seven, declaring September fifteenth through October fifteenth as Latino Heritage Month. Do I have any volunteers to read it into the record? Because I will cry no matter what. Okay. Thank you, Trustee Webster.
Whereas Latino Heritage Month is a month to celebrate and pay tribute to the contributions that generations of Latino Americans have made to American history, society and culture through their contributions in sciences, arts, government and commerce. And whereas Latino Heritage Month is also a time to look at and celebrate the current contributions of Latino Americans. And whereas the observation started in nineteen sixty-eight as Latino Heritage Week under President Lyndon Johnson and was expanded by President Ronald Reagan in nineteen eighty-eight to cover a thirty-day period starting on September fifteenth and ending on October fifteenth. It was enacted into law on August seventeenth, nineteen eighty-eight on the approval of Public Law one hundred dash four oh two. And whereas the Petaluma City Schools Board of Education recognizes that each student needs an opportunity to understand the common humanity underlying all people, to develop pride in their own identity and heritage, and to understand, respect and accept the identity and heritage of others. And whereas the History Social Science Framework for California Public Schools, kindergarten through grade twelve, states that the history curriculum of community, state, region, nation and world must reflect the experiences of men and women of different racial, religious and ethnic groups and must be integrated at every level. Now therefore, it be resolved that Petaluma City Elementary and Petaluma Joint Union High School District's Board of Education proclaims September fifteenth, twenty twenty-four through October fifteenth, twenty twenty-four as Latino Heritage Month.
Thank you. I forgot. Do I hear a motion?
Yeah, I move to approve the resolution.
A second.
All right. Does anyone remember from me lecturing you last year? Why does the month start in the middle of the month? Not nobody's birthday. It is some nation's birthdays. It was the Independence Day of many different Latin American countries. Okay.
Slowly remind us again.
Slowly, bitch.
I I'm gonna miss, I'm not gonna name all the countries because I'll miss one and then somebody will be mad at me. But um I believe there are at least six Latin American countries that had their uh days of independence around the fourteenth, fifteenth, sixteenth, seventeenth of September. Um, so that is why it seems a little bit funky and straddles two months, but um
We get it.
We are very excited to celebrate Latino Heritage Month. And with that, I will call it to a vote. All in favor? Aye. I'm not even gonna entertain the idea. Anyone's opposed. Um, it carries. It's unanimous. So moving on, we'll go to Business Services and a report and plan about Proposition twenty-eight. This time I'm gonna do it right. Can I have a motion?
I move to um, accept the report and plan for the Arts and Music Education Funding Program.
A second.
All right. Amanda, is that? Amanda, is that, I know it's business services, but I always think of Tony when I think of this prop twenty eight. So that's why I was looking at both of you. Yeah, but whoever wants to present.
Why is there where it says on this fiscal year, twenty twenty three, it looks like we have absolutely no certificated classified teaching aides in the arts education program. I was kind of curious about that.
That's because we did not spend any prop twenty eight dollars in fiscal year twenty three, twenty four. So tonight we bring forward the expended, final expenditures for both districts. As part of the top twenty eight allocation, we did not receive our funding until allocation until January. So it was advised that you not hire or spend dollars before you receive them. We did not have an opportunity to spend them in last fiscal year because when the plans, when the language came out, it gave the discretion of the funds to site administrators, meaning that the funds were for each individual school. And as a district, we were hoping to combine and do them within our separate districts. So in order to do that, we had to meet and confer with the site administrators and have their approval. Yes. So now we are allowed to spend the carryover in this, in out years. We do not lose the original allocation.
I would hope not, since they were the ones that took forever to give it to us. Any questions or comments about this very exciting report?
Was very interesting.
Very interesting, for sure. All right. All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Any abstention? All right. So moving on to the community workforce agreement, again, I'll let Amanda present, but then I know we have some reps here who may be able to better answer some questions too. Yes, sorry. I've got too excited.
I move to approve the community workforce agreement.
All right, Amanda, take it away.
All right. Thank you. Tonight we bring forward the community workforce agreement with the North Bay Building and Construction Trades Council. And so we had an opportunity, President Quinn and I, to meet with two gentlemen to work on what this could look like for the district. They presented us with a draft that we then sent to legal counsel. Due to the timing of when we met and when our board meetings were aligning and the November election, we needed to bring forward a draft agreement with authority for the superintendent or designate need to sign off as long as there are no material changes. Any changes to this agreement will go back to legal and they will determine if they are deemed material or not. So there is a chance that this will need to come back at our next board meeting. So the red line is what changes we are suggesting to the template that was given to us. And the really, the original scope covered all district projects over sixty thousand dollars. We would like to move forward to it being projects funded by Measure Z or Measure Double A if passed. The exclusions added carve out several types of constructions that are typically excluded from such agreements. We made some other modifications throughout the agreement, primarily focusing on the scope and project applicability. The next steps are to work on, continue to work through the CWA with the union and hopefully come to an agreement.
So we're voting on the amended draft. Is that right?
Yes.
The draft is the amended first document.
Yes, the red lines. I was actually surprised that legal didn't tear into it more. I was pleasantly surprised because I, you know, legal is gonna legal. So yeah, overall, I definitely am in support of this CWA. I hope you all will notice that we only got emails from building exchanges that are not actually local. The North Bay Building Exchange in general respects the work that the trade unions do and has a, a good, a better relationship than a lot of other places. So we got people from Arcata, which I don't think they're local to me. So they're not, I don't think they're driving down here for those jobs. They aren't driving down here to be at the meeting. So, you know, I think that this is a good step to a good relationship with labor, keeping jobs local, all those great things. The only, the big thing that I would want to possibly see that, I don't know if it would count as a material change. And I think it's dependent on what my fellow board members think is not the, or I don't know how to phrase it, about maintenance. I would like union labor to be able to do maintenance when it's not obviously super time sensitive or emergency. I don't know how everyone else here feels. Well, yes, this would be for, we're not, because those are also union jobs. Those are, yeah. So no, for, instead of contracting, when we're contracting out, it would be following this agreement. No, we wouldn't bring in random other people to do jobs that our maintenance team can do. It's my understanding, right?
Yeah, that's in there.
Yeah, correct. Yeah, but like most maintenance is, we are lucky to know enough to have a wonderful, large maintenance team. So a lot of work is actually done internally.
And they're all represented by CSEA.
Yes.
Yes. So CSEA first, then my friends here, then everybody else.
The bottom line is by doing this, we keep it local, which means we keep our dollars local, which means that we have local people working on this who probably have kids in our schools, so they have a greater stake. So I, I don't see any downside at all.
Can I help just for a minute? We just concluded negotiations with Sonoma County and the Water Agency for a, a community workforce agreement. We, there were, there are carve outs for the maintenance, for the people who do the regular maintenance and that. That's something we worked through. Frankly, we were asked to provide a template lickety split and we did. But we, 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 there's always a little bit of discussion, so, but that, that kind of issue comes up and we dealt with it with the county successfully.
Amanda, does the workforce agreement, would it in any way benefit or harm us to, in our attempt to leverage state bond money?
Oh, my second favorite topic, proposition two, state facilities bond on the November ballot. To last week or the week before, I attended a Coalition for Adequate School Housing Committee meeting. I'm on their legislative action team and we meet with advisory groups and in support of proposition two. And one of the things that came up during this is that the governor's office is working on language to include community workforce agreements as part of matching funds. We don't know what this looks like and what initially, what, but it could potentially be one of the requirements along with the facilities master plan and having project closeouts. So this is another step that could potentially favor state matching funds.
So then in that case, would it be better to anger legal and go back to the idea of having the CWA for all projects, not just bond funded projects? Or is that too much a can of worms?
Most of our, our projects that qualify for state matching funds, we will be using bond funds.
Okay, right. Yeah, that makes sense.
Normally the process is, is that when the governing body decides to go forward, then it's turned over to legal. And we go back and forth and then usually you get a report from legal as to how the document ended up in the form it is. And to answer your questions, we wouldn't dream of negotiating in public session. It's the sort of thing where it's worked out with legal, because every situation is different. You know, every employer, there's a history and there's a, there's things that we were asked to provide something, there's a basic template, but, and then, and then the refinement comes later.
Perfect. I mean, I'm cool with that as long as they're cool with that and Amanda is cool with that and legal is gonna legal no matter what, so. Any other questions or comments on the CWA? Have we ever had a CWA before? Do you know? I mean, I, I don't know if we have any record of that anywhere anyway.
Find any record.
Yeah, so this might be our first CWA. So do, we heard a motion, we heard a second. All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? All right, we just passed Petaluma City Schools' first community workforce agreement. Thank you. All right. So moving on, oh my God, this is so many letters. Resolution twenty four, twenty five dash zero eight, California Adult Education Program Member Participation and Appointee Designation to SCOS Oversight Committee, or not quite SCOS, Sonoma County Adult Education Consortium Oversight Committee. I think I know what this is. We just gotta appoint our new principal to this thing, right, Tony?
We're just renewing the, the consortium agreement and updating the information to reflect our new adult school principal.
Downright logical. Do I hear a motion?
I move to approve resolution twenty four, twenty five dash zero eight.
All in favor? I, I think I heard or saw everyone, so I know no opposition. All right. So, Esmeralda, you got nothing? Esmeralda, I'm just. That just means next month she's gonna be doing like ten presentations. All right. Comments from the public on discussion or information items? The public, do you have any, any thoughts on any of these? No. Cool. So now we'll move on to our discussion and information items, starting with a new board policy that should have existed long before now, firearms on school grounds. The first reading, yes. Thank you, Maddie and Friends. Since it's just discussion or information, Amanda, if you want to just.
Great. Tonight we bring forward Board Policy thirty five fifteen point seven, firearm, arms on school grounds. This is a draft right out of the CSBA Board Policy Manual. There are two options to allow or disallow firearms on school grounds. And the draft that I am bringing forward.
In California?
Yes.
Yes, there are districts that allow.
There are districts that allow. I mean, there is penal code about concealed carry, but a board policy in cases of this can supersede. If and when that firearm was then used, the person could be charged. So it's a very odd situation. We are saying that we do not allow weapons on school grounds unless it is local law enforcement or other appropriate individuals like the FBI, I guess. We'd like them.
Yeah, non-local, yeah, yeah, non-local law enforcement. Yeah, another one that I think downright logical, definitely embarrassing. We didn't have this earlier. I mean, hopefully we never need the policy, but now at least our principals will have the power to point to the policy and not just say, I'm pretty sure you can't do that. Great. Any other comments or questions?
Just, I just want to thank you, you know, because, you know, I, I was approached and we, we had an organization I belong to, the American Association of University Women, had collaborated with other people and put on a panel on gun safety last year and they collaborated with us. And so we just kind of wanted to build on this and I got a call from a, a good friend and she's going, I think we should, do we have a policy about guns? And I'm going, well, yeah, no, you can't have a gun on our campus. And, and come to find out, that's not true. So I really appreciate that this was brought it back so quickly and that we have it now. I also want to say that I was really appreciative that that the prohibition is going to be included in the district comprehension, comprehensive safety plan and that that's going to be communicated to everybody. So, thank you.
It will come back next month as action item?
Yeah, I think it has to be an action item, but I, yeah.
I also appreciate all the citations that are in there. They were really helpful.
All right. So now a new first reading, that kind of feels like a second reading, but it's officially a first reading because of amendments. The Student Board Member Handbook. Tony, what, what is this? I'm just kidding.
So I know that we've, for the last four cycles now, we've, we've had student board members and, and having a guide to support what they're doing. And also in, any students that would be interested in, in pursuing, uh, being a student board member, having a handbook that can simply explain what the, what their roles are and also information about the process and procedures that we typically go through as a, as a board. So this is really just that first draft of what that is. I think one, one area is that, you know, we, we want to be able to provide students credit. And being a student board member, it is on UC DRS as an A through G credit. However, we may not need to determine what criteria would they qualify for that credit. So I think in here I put it just a draft language that it's eighty percent attendance of, of board meetings and participate in one committee. But that's up to the board to decide if there's any other criterias or adjust those criterias. But otherwise, just feedback on anything that you would like to see added or aside from just fixing some formats on here. Any additional things that you would recommend for this student handbook? And it, it is a living document that can be adjusted and changed throughout the year as we review it annually.
Any thoughts? My first thought is maybe, maybe this is too nitpicky, but but I like the eighty percent and maybe saying eighty percent of meetings for, for like two hours or longer. Because I don't want to make them stay until midnight on those really long ones. Like in some ways I do, because that's when, a lot of the most important stuff comes at the end of the meeting. The presentations are awesome too, but a lot of the actual governance is really towards the end of the meeting. But at the same time, they are children and sometimes we go till ten or eleven at night and I also don't want to make their parents come pick them up at ten or eleven at night. Yeah.
I have one comment. And I see maybe appointed to subcommittees. We've been talking a lot about wanting student voice on our committees. So I think it would be great if we could, I don't know if I want to force them to sit on committees because they're busy, but I would really love to see them pick a committee or two that they would be part of. And I don't, I'm not really sure, because you say May.
I think it has to stick with May because of.
Some committees are during the school day and they're in classes, some are.
Right, like CIC, it's like all on the school day.
Yeah, but like the Arts Committee meets after school, LCAP meets after school.
Also, they are getting elective credit.
No, go ahead.
Okay, yeah.
Because I think I might have talked over you, so.
The snacks. School. Most committees do meet after school because teachers are involved. So it's just, maybe instead of May, we could say strongly encouraged. Make it a little stronger language. I don't know. What do you think?
Yeah, I, I think, you know, it, it could, we could, we could, we could find out which committees are after school. I, I think it's hard because some of them, they're, they're all involved in their communities and, and the school events. So after school, sometimes they're playing sports and they might have, you know, a club. So I think, I think they sign up for a committee and they, they, maybe they can participate in different ways. If they can't attend, maybe they, you know, interview one of the members to get information or review the minutes or the notes or something, or allows them to participate, but maybe they aren't expected to be there at every single meeting.
Agreed. Totally agree.
And it feels like in the past, when we've done our committee signups, they've usually wanted to be on a few. So just feels like it's happened naturally before. So hopefully these three will, yeah.
Do you guys think that there's a, I mean, I know that we had a student board member last year who had a lot of games and he missed a lot. So I was just, that eighty percent he may not have met.
Right, but then did he earn the right to say he had elective credit? I love Philip. Philip was great, but he did miss a lot in the spring. So should he have gotten credit?
So then if he, he just didn't get the credit, right?
Right. I mean, we could say an eighty percent, I mean, maybe they can only miss, it, it, maybe they can miss more, but it has to be an excuse. Like there has to be a legitimate reason that they miss it as opposed to just not showing up. I, I guess, I guess the spirit of it is that we want, we want to encourage the students and we want to reward them with credits. and we want to reward them with credits. And maybe, you know, we don't need to make it completely difficult for them. But in the spirit of what we're trying to do, you know, and we can address it if things obviously go in a different direction. But I, I think we can give a lot of grace for our student members. I mean, in the most part, they all show up, you know, when they can. And if there's, if they don't, it's probably for a really good reason, so.
They're already really active.
Sure.
They're already really active, they're in clubs, they're in sports, they're in honors and AP classes. So I think we have to give them a little bit of leeway.
Yeah, I don't think we should have requirements for them to stay a student board member, but I do think to get school academic credit, there does need to be a floor.
So, I mean, we can just, we can just say 80%, but we, we.
Yeah, I doubt we'll ever really need to enforce it or have it come down to the hours or minutes.
Unless they drop out of the league.
Yeah. Cool, then they'll have to find another elective. All right, any other questions or comments on the Board Member Handbook? All right, see Esmeralda, I did come, I, I shouldn't have remembered. It's been a while since agenda review. Tell us about this update to board policy and the AR that goes with it, because they're basically the same.
Yes, exactly. So bringing Board Policy 5141.21, Administering Medications and Monitoring Health Conditions. This hasn't been updated since 2012 and there are some areas, particularly around epinephrine auto injectors or opioid overdoses and ways of responding to those medical emergencies and monitoring health conditions that will bring this board policy up to date and the associated administrative regulation to reflect the procedures that we would use.
And is PD and training also being, you know, up to the same standard? So that the people on the ground that would be administering this medication are up to date?
Yes, so our school nurses, for example, with our diabetic students with insulin. So for medications that are prescribed, there is training and support that is provided. And then for our staff in general, our nursing team is going out and doing that basic first aid CPR kind of training, how to administer an EpiPen, Narcan training for seventh through 12th grade staffs. Since that's now a requirement and needs to be reflected in our safety plan as well. So this brings this board policy up to date.
Perfect. Any other questions or comments? All right, great future business. It came up a little bit in closed session, but I would love a more public future, like update in the future about what's going on with the cell towers. Even just, it doesn't need to be a whole presentation or anything, just where we are, why we pay lawyers to do legal things.
I'll give you an update on the cell towers, but I don't know, I can't give you an update on why we pay lawyers.
Fair, very fair. Any other future business?
Yeah, I would like to have a discussion about cell phones on campus. I've, I've gotten a lot of emails about it, as I know you guys have. There are, Santa Rosa City Schools has banned it. LA City Schools, which is this huge sprawling district, has, has banned them. So I would like us to have a conversation about that.
And Esmeralda started a working group, so maybe you can give us an update on who's been participating, what's been going on with that? Maybe that can be a good way to hear what conversation has already been, started to happen. Cool. Yes, that is all up and everything lately, the phones in schools. It's great, I'm glad we're talking about it finally, yeah.
Yeah, exactly. I want to revise, I think I brought this up last month. Revised the climate resolution and so that it mirrors the climate goals.
We told you to do it. You, you got, you.
You told me to do it?
Yeah, we told your committee to do it. You brought it up last time and we said your committee should do that.
Oh, the committee should do it?
Yeah.
Okay, okay, so and we can do it any way we want.
Yeah.
So.
Yeah. Oh, yeah. I mean, we, we still, we'll still have to vote to approve it, but you could. You two, you could, you two go have fun with your committee and do get the best thing you can.
You did the first one. I, I edited the first one, I added. Anyway.
So, yeah.
Okay, so then the other thing along with that, that I brought up the last time. And maybe this just has to come through the Climate Action Committee, but I would really like to have a representative from each site, each school site, come to, to be, you know, participate in the Climate Action Committee. A parent, a student, somebody that, from each site, so that they can offer their perspective from their different sites. And I was just thinking through the PTAs, I don't know, in school site councils. So I don't know who's supposed to. So Dan would do the outreach on that? Okay. All right.
But maybe Tony and Esmeralda, you can encourage principals to think about identifying people.
Yeah, we have a committee signup sheet that we sent to all the principals to, to make sure that they're signing up their, their teachers and staff to each one of the committees that we have. And then of course, to reach out to their parents to do the same. Yes, that's true.
Great, thank you.
Along those same lines, you know, we have the, Petaluma has the Purple Cup Program. But it'd be great, Amanda or someone, Amanda could work with.
Yeah, can we have purple cups?
Could work with the city and ask if we could have the return stations at the high schools.
You're so smart.
You know, the kids are going to Starbucks during lunch.
Yeah, I literally had one of the purple cups. I still haven't even had a purple cup. I drink coffee at home, coffee is expensive, but.
You know, because they're coming back and they're just throwing the cups away in the garbage instead of, you know, because, but if we had a purple cup or to dispenser at the school, like at the field, you know, and wherever. Well, and you know, with football season starting and just in general, so if. I would appreciate that. I started to email, I'm like, how could they do this job for Amanda? You know? You know, because you have such a great relationship with them and they love you so much, so. I would love it. And then, you know, we could work with the student board members, well, actually at San Antonio as well. And have them help get the word out on campus.
Yeah, I really feel like even just having one or two kids would use them if they knew. Yeah. Right, cool.
And then.
Yeah, keep going.
How do we set up some type of agreement? Like an action or non-action item about the BMI? Like, I'm just wondering what that process looks like. And I know that you're going to discuss it with Ramona, but I would love for it to be a larger discussion. Just because I'm sure, you know, after people hear about the meeting and as the word gets out, more people, more people are going to want to give input. And we heard from, you know, just the students up here, they're not comfortable with it. I'm not comfortable with it. And I would just love for us to have like some type of like set agreement or not about this, so.
Well, I guess if we're, if we end up not having a set agreement, there's almost nothing to talk about. So I think it may depend on how that conversation goes and whether there's any other data point they're willing to play ball with.
So can, I, I was, I was a little confused about whether or not we have a contract already with Healthy Petaluma.
We do not have.
We do not, so this is.
So could the contract come back at the next meeting, either with or without BMI? Because then we as a board can, if it's included and we don't want it, we can make a motion to strike that part of the contract and then it's up to them to take it or leave it.
May I suggest that perhaps at this point, it would be a good idea to have the district leadership, and I will work with Esmeralda as well as Tony, to really kind of pursue based on what we heard, the direction of the board, to go back and work with Healthy Petaluma in terms of potentially, is there an option that does not necessarily have to include BMI? So I, I think from what I gather from the conversation, really that is something that is a non-negotiable item. So I think we have a pretty good idea as to where we can go from here in working with Healthy Petaluma and then coming back to you as to either giving you two different options of how information can, or data. I think what I would understand and presume is that Healthy Petaluma wants a baseline data to be able to justify whatever investments they're making. And also to compare later on whether there is actually, is making a difference, whatever activities they may be implementing in this school. Is that okay with you?
Yeah, and I'm totally fine with data being collected when it's not that specific data. And I do want to be partner with them.
I'll, I'll go forward to you, Esmeralda. BMI data collected through survey just for you to look at and consider. Because it's, it would be an, an automatic opt-in, because you would have to respond to it. And it'd be for adults to report the, the measurements of their child as opposed to a child being put on a scale.
Yeah, yeah, if we're, if I'm ever going to vote in favor of using BMI, it would have to be through a measure like that and I, yeah.
Well, and also a lot of the stuff they were talking about, we're already doing. We have gardens at every elementary school, we have wonderful volunteers.
Right, but if they ever want to give us money to keep doing that, or they, they. They need data. I know. Sure, I can't get the mic right today. Any other future business? All right, with that, I adjourn this meeting at 9:14 PM.